Good evening, I'm gonna call to order the meeting of the town manager's board of selectmen. It's Tuesday, August fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen. It is six thirty P M. We're meeting in the selectmen's office at the town hall, and we will start with a roll call order. Kevin?
Kevin McCarthy here, Paul Schuber here.
Diane Kennedy here.
Steve Gomer here.
And if everyone would like to join us in the pledge allegiance, please do so. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, we're starting a little early tonight for the purpose of conducting the public portion of the town manager's annual review. I'm gonna talk slowly, hopefully selectmen can only will join us soon. The regular business meeting will start around seven fifteen. We may take a short break if we complete the review before seven fifteen. At that time, we'll start off with public comment. If you're here for an item to bring up during public comment that's not on the agenda, please sign in, there's a clipboard on the chair. And then, otherwise, we will go through the agenda as it is printed throughout the course of the night. So, just a little bit of background. The town manager annual performance evaluation is something that awkwardly must be presented in public. But it's too primed. We each fill out the same evaluation form ahead of time and meet individually with Chris on that. And then, that portion of the review goes into his private personnel file. And then, we deliver some of the kind of the overarching themes individually here tonight, and that becomes his public review. So, what I'm gonna do is basically, we have, I'll call it, I call it section four, because it's titled section four, where we're asked to discuss the town manager's best achievements for, this would be for fiscal year eighteen, which ended June thirtieth. Subjects which we each individually would think he would benefit most from further attention. And then, we'll each summarize our overall evaluation in just kind of prose comments. There's no, it'll be recorded, but most of us write those up every year. So, what I'd like to do, and this'll take probably five minutes, is just to review the sections that we each individually reviewed with Chris. And then, we'll get to the summary portion. And then, obviously, at that point, if any of the selectmen want to embellish or change, you know, or comment on some of the things that I'm summarizing right now, you can do so in your personal comments. Okay with you?
Okay.
So, the first, the first section that we reviewed with Chris are performance goals. So, those are goals that are set at to be about this time every year for the upcoming year and the year that we're actually kind of already in the middle of. So, we discussed with Chris, goal number one was planning and facilities. To plan, cost, and recommend funding the annual town meeting in April for the town hall project. Establish requirement of best practices to successfully manage capital projects and stimulate discussions with town boards in reviewing town planning and zoning initiatives. We will address those individually in each of our comments. Not, we won't address each individual item, but those, when we summarize our comments, those are, those will be reflective of these kinds of things. The second goal we set for Chris and also the board was communication. To assist with improvement of communications among committees and boards with the board of selectmen, to improve communication between residents and town government staff regarding activities, issues, projects, and updates through multiple channels. And the third goal was organizational management. To assess and review the organizational structure of staff and committees to seek opportunities for increased efficiencies, training, and development recognition. A lot of that had to do with H R and advances we made in H R this year. And then, technology, to assess and support current financial I T systems and alternative options and determine future needs. And to drive technology infrastructure and development to support key initiatives, including efficiencies and operational automation, record keeping, and communications with residents and staff. Again, these are goals we set last year. A lot of, you can probably read between the lines about what a lot of those priorities were last August. And financial, number one was to hire a finance director with support and guidance from the board of selectmen. Make recommendations for advanced financial training for town officials. Provide support for exploration of options for more effectively managing town pension reserves and assist with the development of strategies for funding O P E B. I don't know if anybody wants to just weigh in here. I will say that most of these goals are in progress, kind of always will be. And when we set our goals for F Y nineteen, a lot of these will be revisited. They're just kind of ongoing priorities for the town. Does select, anybody from the selectmen want to say anything, or you want to leave your comments? Of it?
Yeah.
Okay. The second section that we discussed individually with Chris and that we will comment on in general later is his personal, professional, and organizational integrity. Measuring him on his dedication to the highest ideals of honor and integrity in all public and personal relationships in order to merit the respect and confidence of elected officials, other officials, and employees and of the public. Personal integrity, professional integrity, organizational integrity. Teamwork and leadership. The evaluation is, is he a productive team leader in responding to, encouraging, and supporting the ideas of others? Does he instill a loyal cooperative attitude among employees in the organization? Considering his facilitative leadership among and between different groups and committees in town and his mediation and negotiation skills, which would be on one-to-one, and also in some of our more trickier union negotiations and also any legal matters. Staff effectiveness. Does he encourage the development and high-level performance of staff and employees throughout the organization? Exhibits skill and motivation techniques, demonstrates ability to constructively identify other strengths and weaknesses. Interpersonal skills. Does he treat others in a fair, consistent, impartial, and professional manner? Is he effective in dealing with people without arousing antagonism and demonstrates an understanding of difficult situations? Maintains an open and approachable manner, presents a positive outlook, and sets an example for subordinates. Customer service. Does he demonstrate a constant and sincere interest in providing the highest quality service to town residents and instill the value of good customer service in his staff? And lastly, under the performance standards, compliance in promoting a safe workplace. Does he foster a safe and healthy work environment in compliance with local, state, and federal regulations, labor law, and O C S standards? Does he recognize conditions hazardous to employee health and safety and takes corrective action within limits of authority and resources? Part three are his core responsibilities. He was measured on planning, organization, and flexibility. Does he schedule and plan with the most efficient use of time? Organizes his priorities appropriately, effectively handles a variety of projects, assignments, and people, keeps board members advised of the status of projects and work assignments, and adapts to changing circumstances, policies, and attitudes of others. Prepares budgets based on prioritized needs and objectives of the town. Written and oral communication. Does he write in a clear and concise manner, speaks in a distinct and understandable manner, is persuasive and effective in explaining town positions, policies, procedures, services, programs, and activities, facilitates the flow of ideas, communicates support for policies, programs, or ideals that serve the best interest of the community, conveys ideas and information effectively, communicates information to the media in a way that increases public understanding of local government issues and activities, and builds a positive relationship within the press. Job skills and knowledge. Has a full working knowledge of the administrative and management systems and procedures, understands appropriate methods and techniques, is familiar with applicable law, local, state, and federal legislation and regulations related to the town services, prepares and administers the budget, shows knowledge of budgeting principles and practices, revenue sources, projection techniques, and financial control systems. I sure all want to be a town manager. Financial analysis, interprets financial information to assess the fiscal condition of the town. Human resources management, ensures the policies and procedures for employee hiring, promotion, performance appraisal, and discipline are equitable, legal, and current. Strategic planning, understands and implements long-range and strategic planning techniques, identifies trends that will affect the community, demonstrates an understanding and ability to analyze and facilitate policy choices that will benefit the community in the long run. Problem-solving, decision-making, identifies and isolates problems and solutions, evaluates alternative courses of action and makes a logical decision, uses good judgment, et cetera. Initiative. Proactively seeks solutions and assumes responsibility, demonstrates a willingness to develop and implement new ideas, processes, and procedures, is sensitive to opportunities to improve the quality, efficiency, and effectiveness of town services, presents a positive outlook, and is willing to devote the time and effort necessary to get the job done and reach high-performance standards. Supervisory oversight and direction, elicits respect from others and sets an example of professionalism within the organization. Motivates and communicates well with the staff, effectively plans, organizes, and delegates work, monitors results, and evaluates the performance of those supervised and provides feedback in a timely manner. Coaching mentoring provides direction, support, and feedback to enable others to meet their full potential. And that is a summary of the items that we based our overall performance evaluation on. So, I will turn it over to whoever wants to go first to kind of summarize your assessment of the things I just mentioned. Talk about his best achievements, subjects which would benefit most from further retention, and add your general comments. Kevin, wanna go first?
Sure. Okay, so in this area here, I have best achievements as well as the subjects that would benefit as well as, if I can read me a statement, I have the general comments. So, in terms of best achievements, I felt as though we have very efficient and effective annual and special town meetings. Do a large part to the excellent listening and negotiation skills of Chris, which results in the resolution of complex issues before town meeting. And it almost can't be understated, it's really the kind of work that you don't really get to see, which is good, maybe, one of the good things that you can have a public review with people could be, this is the kind of thing that, it's the nuts and bolts of making sure these meetings work properly. And I've seen him firsthand make sure the details that need to be covered between various priorities are covered. Resolutions are made, he's not afraid to address problem areas, and he's very bright about coming up with solutions. It's really made our town meetings, our special town meetings, one of the lots that it's visible. I gotta say, I thank you as a selectman and as a citizen. You know, it's really been, it's really one of your big skill areas, and I wanted to highlight that. Ongoing triple A financial, A A A rating, financial rating is a great accomplishment, tremendous accomplishment. Again, that's huge, you know, it's a whole staff, the whole town have to do this, of course, and it's taken a number of years, but only fifteen or sixteen communities out of three hundred, or maybe twenty communities out of three hundred and fifty-one in the, in the state of Commonwealth of Massachusetts have a triple A rating. And it just gives you a huge amount of credibility in terms of borrowing money and your ability to borrow money, fund things, your reputation as a town without belaboring it too much. It's just too often that I read in the newspaper or see here on the radio communities that don't have anywhere near these ratings. And the agony they go through is terrible. And the fact that we, you know, this being accomplished and maintained is very valuable to this community. His fiscal responsibility is just, is very essential to keeping our community properly run. Areas that would benefit from further attention, I do like to see him work better in terms of working with committees and so forth. And just the general coordination with the committees. I cited particularly the long-range financial planning committee, which is one that I don't think has lived up to the promise that it could have lived up to. Chris and I discussed that personally. In fact, he's already come up with several ideas to really make sure that that gets off to a really good start. But anyways, I think that something like that is, is an area that needs to be done or, and that also, I think, a more aggressive addressment, you know, in so on, addressment, it's a difficult one, but the power outages and stuff that we've had as a community. I just don't think that the coordination and the addressment of that has been, you know, is an area which I think needs to be, we need to have improvements on. It's a critical area for the, for the, for the town, and it's of a huge concern to the community and area for improvement. In a general sort of an area, I would comment as follows, that I find Chris to be an excellent listener and negotiator and mediator, especially when working in areas of potential conflict or in union and other contract or settlement negotiations. He's also a very constructive, flexible, and creative problem solver, as shown in his effective use of the human resource department, which has been created and established and further, much further onto his, his time with us. The establishment of the financial director, which Chris has hired the first one, I think, ever really, right? Is that, oh, not ever, but I'm the first one that he's hired. Anyways, it's worked very well. And the finance directive positions, as well as the planning positions, all those things I think have been speedwelted, and Chris has done. Chris is very good at recognizing and articulating opposing points of view while addressing problems and conflicts. And he's just sort of a theme you see central here, that in areas of conflict and the hard thinking that needs to be done to come up to solutions in conflict, extremely essential for a small town like us to operate. It's one of Chris's biggest strengths, and we're blessed for having that. And he's got a very good mind that way and personality. As well, Chris's leadership and proactive negotiation skills have enabled the town to enjoy increasingly productive town, special, town and special meetings, which are, that rocks about grassroots democracy. Chris is very knowledgeable about his role and his position and his role as town manager. And he remains willing and eager to engage in new learning and train himself, as well as train others, which has something I look for to see if you're, if you're, you know, training and developing a staff around you, he just speaks volumes about the kind of character of who you are as well as of our town. Chris conducts himself as town manager with a high level of professionalism and integrity. It's one of the, another strong area of, you know, Lee can be as professional, and people can trust his integrity or her integrity, like we have grown to with Chris. It's invaluable. Chris has made good progress on being organized, timely, and clear in his communications with many town committees and boards, which are essential to the function of our government. However, more progress is needed in this area as effective and defendable citizen participation and committee support and leadership from the executive branches are constant, which we, we, we utilize the credibility and ultimately the effectiveness of our government. So, it's not all great, there's some. As well, Chris is effectively increasing his knowledge, the use of social media. This is something that I don't think, you know, he was doing a lot of, became necessarily natural, but you can see he's forced himself to learn more and more of that area. And now, his social media posts on his weekly update are going high to me, and they get over fifteen hundred hits regularly, whether you know what that means or not. But he's, he's become very good at it and in working into the information age, which is essential, very essential, in information age, social media, to more than government. It's just words that not, Chris said those exact words actually, town. Continues to benefit greatly from Chris's skill and strong desire, desire to unite both, to unite our town both in its civil as well as in our communal character. And that's a benefit that we have, something I really appreciate, Chris. Enjoy working with him. I look forward to continuing to work with him.
So, I kind of along the same lines as Diane moved me up, that a lot of this is the goal, and all things are in progress, which we kind of know, and make things better. Coming out of the forward chair, I really thought it was an excellent idea this year. I thoroughly enjoyed working with him. I saw aspects that the town will never see in interaction with citizens, with more political supporters that are, you know, supporting our town. Looking at it from the union negotiation point of view, looking at it from disasters when the storms hit. He's out and running around in the four-by-fours, and I saw him when I was walking the dog out trying to find out what is going on with each time when the power went out, getting in touch with the national grid, a lot of it was out of his hands. He took a lot of flak for it. He did very well in very difficult situations. And I, as the chair, you see a lot of the background that no one in the town would see and a lot of us wouldn't see otherwise without that personal one-on-one that we're, as a chair, work with them. I think some of his great results were really town meeting and special town meeting. I can't think of the number of people that don't live in town and say, how long is a town meeting, really? And it is the ability to arrange things, organize things, get a consensus long before the town meeting is done. And that, that is one of your clear abilities, is to get a consensus, to build consensus, to build a committee that will work together and guide committees. I think that is a huge plus. The, you know, the best achievements, I think there were a group of them. There was, you know, the finance director, planning director, health director, hands-on approach to getting out, talking at the, you know, at the various groups. Some of it was the planning, some of it was the assessing, some of it was just right down in the town hall, a town ring with the, you know, the farmer's market getting to know the town. I think that there's been numerous things with the utilities that, you know, you look at the utilities, the national grid, that was tough in the year and the winter. But, you know, he also got through a lot of the things that, you know, the federal energy committee was going through with the, with the solar panels. And got that in and it's up and running, which, you know, a lot of that is the background that, again, the town would never see. I still think you definitely need some help with organization within the town, because it's a, it's a big responsibility. I think from a, you know, it's a forty-five million dollar town running, and there's, it's really run on a lot of committees. And a lot of the personal work that's done by you is to try to keep these committees organized and disciplined and get these accomplished. And that's sometimes pretty tough to do, but you've done incredible work. Interaction with, with a lot of the federal and state groups was really impressive as well last year in the combination of Cunningham Bridge, Brown Brook, you know, going back to the dredging of the harbor, that, that sort of interaction is there. It's competent interaction, it's very well done, it's executed well. Again, a lot of the town would never see that, and it's, as a, as a board chair. It was done really well, and I want to thank you for all of that work you've done. I think overall, communication skills, you know, whenever I ask you, we need to draft a letter, I'll send you a letter, you bring it back, this is what you need to do. We, back and forth, and the final draft is always heard, which, thank you again, for a lot of the things that we sent last year. I think that, you know, I'd love to continue working with you. I'd love to have you stay here, so minus, I think, a much, I was very impressed with this year. So, I hope you stay, I hope you enjoy it. I thoroughly work, I really enjoy working with you. I think you're tremendous. Behind-the-scenes work that is really appreciated, between hiring, interacting with unions, interaction with contracts, both local and, you know, the national grid and all the other things. I think you exceeded my expectations, so I'm working to enjoy that you're here. So, that's, that's it, I mean.
Steve, you wanna go next?
Your, you know, your best achievements, that they can get pretty lengthy and at the risk of reiterating, I think they revolve around what I think is your core competency, and that's an understanding of diplomacy and how to effectively administer it. Whether that's applied to negotiations surrounding union contracts, whether it's, you know, within your own staff, or working with five distinct personalities out of five distinct cats. You managed to herd the group well and manage up to that. And frankly, that's, that's been a plus, is learning to manage, manage up as well as manage down. Areas where I personally like to see some, some improvement is just on some of the follow-up questions that we ask, even though we may have asked them informally, that doesn't mean we're any less interested. I use only one example of this one rather than belabor the point. But an example there would be a review of Brown Brook. We know there, there continue to be some outstanding issues there. Let's, let's talk about it, or as a person I respect greatly, as I said, problems don't aid to well. Let's figure it out. I disagree with some of my, one of my colleague's words earlier, that we have ongoing goals. There's no such thing, a goal is an end point. And so, from that exam, from that perspective, that's not your issue, but rather our issue. We've got to start setting goals that can be defined by their, by their exit ramp. And, you know, specifically, one of those will come up again this year, and that's driven by the O P E B committee. We need to define what the objectives are there, whatever they might be. It might be limitation of its absorption of our, our budget. It might be that we look to fully fund all of our long-term obligations and in some way do that and be willing to recommend to the voters the sacrifice that will go with it. Or we may, we may opt to do the three monkeys, you know, we will hear, we will speak to eat. I hope we, I hope we address it effectively. So, from that perspective, it's not something that I could ever look at you and, as a manager, and say, well, jeez, you continue to kick the can down the road with respect to the goals. If we haven't set an end point, you can't be expected to achieve what we don't define. Areas where I believe, the area where I believe you can make the greatest strides are ones in which, interestingly enough, you have already made great strides. And that, those are personal organization and timely and effective communication on the inbound side. If there's one thing that I hear on a regular basis is communication from citizens, that they have a difficult time connecting with you, reaching you. Now, mind you, we've all learned that the way to do that is to get on your calendar. And so, if anybody happens to be listening in the audience or on television, the way to contact Chris is to get on his calendar. And the way to get on his calendar is to avoid calling Chris. Tracy, okay? Tracy is the commander of the calendar. And in doing so, you effectively identify time on Chris's, on Chris's docket, where he can focus on what it is that you have to deal with. Having said that, I will also point out that Chris is the town manager on a relatively understaffed organization that is responding to eight thousand very important personalities. And as a result of that, it is only so thinly that we might be able to spread his time. He is, he's effective and will be even more so by continuing to display the ability to delegate on an ever-increasing basis, because I think he probably found a leverage that comes with that, and will continue to do so. That ends my comments, and I'll turn it over to my colleagues.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
So, I just want to say, you know, you do have a tough job. You have essentially five bosses, and each one of us is special in our own way. And, you know, we all have different expectations for you. Having said that, I think you had a good year. I think, you know, you are moving towards building your leadership team, which is something we never had before. I don't know if folks in town understand how lean the town hall staff was over the years, but it was extremely lean. There weren't people in the leadership positions that could actually do the job. And as a result, you know, we had town managers that were running around doing payroll, they were doing everything. And I think Chris has done a great job of onboarding this year two senior leadership positions in the finance director's job. in the finance director's job and the planning job. And both those hires, I think, helped Chris be more effective moving forward. And, you know, I think we are slowly making progress towards a better managed town. We have a lot of projects in the pipeline, as you know, and I think as these projects come to fruition, it's going to be easier for us to manage all the, all the stuff that has to get managed. So, you know, I, I appreciate your skills as a negotiator, I appreciate your skills, your political skills with all the different personalities in town, like I think everybody else has acknowledged. It makes working and doing our job much easier. Subjects that would benefit from further attention? I, I'd really like to see you communicate a vision for the management of the town. You know, and that could take the form of like a five-year strategic plan. Here's what I want to do over the next five years, very simple. You know, it doesn't have to be a really complicated thing. I just, you know, I, I think would help all of us, you know, focus and manage towards some of these long-term goals we've all been kicking around for the last couple of years. The second thing is, you know, the organizational skills. You know, I think you've done a good job of delegating out your calendar. I think as these new leadership team employees get on-boarded, there's going to be more delegation to more effectiveness. And I, I would just like you to spend more time thinking about those, those skills. And my general comments are, I, I'd really like you to see you get some training and mentoring from an outside consultant this year. And, you know, I think you're open and willing to improving your management style. And I think, you know, with coaching and training, you could be one of the best town managers in, in Massachusetts. And, you know, we've talked about this, I don't think it would be, I, I just think we'd all benefit from, you know, bringing in a coach and a mentor.
I'm going to jump on and just start by saying I, I personally think you are the best town manager in the state and have been involved in enough municipal stuff to appreciate the skills that you do bring to the job. In this, the earlier part, some of the skills that I, I didn't put as best achievements, but I think I, I need to highlight it, it's just your commitment to the job and your superior writing skills and your just general knowledge of kind of all the different buckets of responsibilities that you have. In terms of specific achievements for the year, I think the repeating a lot of the things, just the, the continued strength in financial management and in each year improving and adding to that picture. The hiring of the director of planning and the finance director, which are just enormous and important hires for the town. And managing in many ways through delegation, which I think is an important part of managing properly, the various critical planning studies, so master plan, harbor committee, affordable housing, open space, all of these very critical things kind of started, you know, hitting the ground and running this year. And it really has, it's been like a three-ring circus that required exactly your kind of facilitative leadership. Subjects that would benefit most from further attention, you know, echoing some of my colleagues, finding better ways and improved ways all the time to streamline communication within this office, within, you know, one of the selectmen and finding, including efforts to triage and prioritize resident inquiries. Steve said it a little bit, I mean, everybody wants to get on your calendar, but there really are so many important, critical things that are moving forward that not everybody should necessarily get on your calendar. And I think being able to have a plan for communication that manages the expectations of the citizens about, you know, really who should, I mean, not every single pothole or tree limb or neighbor-to-neighbor fence dispute really needs to come into your point, you know, into your office, basically. So I think being able to just say to somebody, listen, the best person for you to talk to is, and it's not necessarily you. I think that is really important. So I, I wrote up a little thing, I'm going to talk real fast. So FY eighteen was a year in which the rubber really hit the road. Chris's steady leadership, positive attitude, that's important, and commitment to the best possible outcome for the town and your tremendous work ethic have navigated us through a year of critical and often competing initiatives. You hired two key staff, the town planner and finance director mid-year while navigating the resulting transitions in these departments. That's not to be underestimated. At the same time, the town was fully engaged in the planning studies and the municipal, all the ones that I've mentioned, the municipal vulnerability program in addition to that. These projects were very intensive for both staff and committees workload and time spent. Throughout F eighteen, Chris was also focused on negotiating all the collective bargaining units contracts, two bridge dam projects, and most critically, the management of the town hall project. I don't think we'll ever see a year in which so many important things kind of rose to the top priority list. As a manager and chief operating officer of the town, Chris has invested in each department, its staff and its success and is engaged beyond the town in professional development as well as identifying best practices to manage staff, facilities, healthcare costs, et cetera, et cetera. With the volume of work and projects and the expectations of success, not only from the board of selectmen, but the community at large, it is imperative that Chris continue, Chris continues to refine his organizational skills and develop, develop an optimal but likely always changing reporting delegation structure. Much, much of my concern in this area is focused on better triaging resident committee inquiries and managing expectations, as I just said. I also hope that with our experienced finance staff, we will soon have a long-range capital plan that will address concerns expressed regarding the town hall project. The town pro, town hall project, as well as many of the planning projects, will continue to be priorities through the next fiscal year and Chris's experience and positive leadership will continue to serve capacity well. So, thank you. Do you want to say anything?
I, I want to thank everyone, all of you and everyone out in, in the town because this is a, I, I've always said that local government is the ultimate team sport and I think in New England there's no better testament than that between meeting and all the committee structure and all. Governments don't run without engagement and it's, and I can genuinely say this is the hardest I've ever worked that I've worked in a much bigger operations, but here you're much closer and you're engaging. It's also been the most rewarding job I've had. We've really gotten a chance to engage and, you know, there's a lot of times I walk across the common and I think people stop me. I had someone, I told the story about this the other day, I had someone, it's the farmer's market. I'm in my tie, it's very hard to hide when I'm walking around the farmer's market in my tie. A gentleman comes over who I, I, I've seen, but I didn't know his name. And he looked a little unhappy and he's coming over towards me, you know.
Yeah, like, oh.
And he goes over to me and he points his finger at me and goes, are you the town badge? I said, well, it depends on who's asking. Then I'm waiting, I'm waiting for the one who goes, you're doing a great job. So I thanked him and I picked up my, my corn and stuff and. But, but people are very genuine in this community. People will tell you if things aren't going right, if things go well. And people are very genuine about giving of their time and talent, which is the most important of all. The successes that we've been able to have together are because we've been. And I very much appreciate all of the time that all of you give out of your lives, which makes the time that I give a whole lot easier. So thank you all and I look forward to a, hopefully not quite as crazy year this next year. But this is something that, you know, you don't have to ever rest on laurels. I mean, it just, it doesn't work like that in, in local government. There's always something new and it requires all of us to continue to be active. And I am committing to continue to do that. I, I like this town, I like all of you and I enjoy, I've enjoyed the interactions, so thank you very much.
Great, congratulations. All right, we are on time. One thing I announced in the beginning of, when we opened the meeting is that if you're here for public comment, so you want to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda, I ask for you to sign in while we take the next agenda item, which is the presentation of the FY seventeen CAFR award. So Chris can sign in if you're not speaking on a matter on the agenda. And then Chris, you can maybe tell us what this is again.
This is our, this is our big plaque, so we, we just, we have, we just got our sixth CAFR award. They used to give plaques every year, but they stopped doing that, so now we get a big grounded plaque. We just won our twenty-seventeen for the best year that concluded last year. It's a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the comprehensive annual financial report, which is up on the webpage. So I want to thank really all of the folks, all of the advisor committee and the capital folks and you and all of the financial staff and our auditors who actually made those possible. So we, we actually had a very, it was super clean. They didn't make any comments on our, on our submissions at all this year, which is pretty cool. So it was a, it was a, it's, it doesn't, it, it means that we're taking a lot of time, we're doing it and we're doing it the right way. So I just want to pass that along that we actually got the award again. And we're hoping this next year to add a submission on the budget, something we've been building up to, so that whole budget document. We had a capital piece this year and we're hoping to have a submission for that. Cross our fingers, I'll look at that one too. And even as we get recognized for last year, we've already started the honor for this, for, you know, for seventeen. We're starting the honor for eighteen already, so the honor is written this last year, so we're already moving. It's like, again, it's one of those things, you don't get to rest on your laurels. It's really nice, I put it up, it's back here. And actually Paul and Don came in the other day, they're both away today. Paul's in a training class and Don is on a quick, long weekend away with his wife. So I did, we did celebrate, well, not with very much, we shook each other's hands. So I will take that up for lunch and, but I just wanted to.
Well, congratulations to you, to your finance team and just underscore all the committee work that's been done in the last ten years to, to get us to a point where we're very proud of our, not only financial situation, but the ability to report it properly.
A few years back, I get it's always, I figured it's going, they want to come back with several page, pages and pages of recommendations and now it's down to really not, a long way, which is fantastic. It shows the progression of the, the finance of the town and your leadership really with your team has done well.
Do you know how impossible it is to think that that would, that would be something we could achieve ten years ago?
I know what it was like in my prior community. We, we took us three tries before even my controller would even let us file. He was afraid to file.
Don't embarrass yourself.
And so we did and we won and, and, and we had a very complicated. But again, I know, I believe, I read before I entered into this job what was going on. So this is actually a testament to all the work that you folks have did to get, it was in one of the first places.
Just say, the, the four words that the acronym stands for are like, you know, water on the wicked witch of the West. Comprehensive annual financial reporting. There was a period where, you know, we couldn't, we couldn't handle any one, any single one of those words.
Yeah, I just want to say, people don't realize that we essentially went back in two thousand and nine and we threw away all our general ledgers from two thousand and nine back and started all over again. And that includes installing an accounting system, bringing on a new finance director, putting in all policies and procedures for how we do all our financial stuff. And it's amazing that we're here and we're consistently doing it the right way. I mean, we were at a point where we couldn't even, we didn't even know what our cash balances were, you know, and it took us five months to calculate cash balances. I believe you can push a button today and get your cash balances.
These sets of books.
You know, and we have electronic payroll, which has been one of my big things over the years. And, you know, we're essentially in the modern age and it's very, very impressive because you guys have done a great job.
I know, when I first got on the board of selectmen, Steve just said it. Their town manager literally sat in that chair and said, we have three sets of books. I was like.
Well, I could, I will not say those words.
We actually, we actually had someone from the advisory committee at that point say, but, so what's the big deal with that? They're not on the advisory committee anymore, so.
You've come a long way, thank you very much and congratulations. Is anybody here to speak from the public?
On what, on this?
Yeah, public comment.
Oh, public comment.
I am.
I want to run along, okay, can you just, you don't need to sign.
She did.
Did you sign it?
Yes.
If you don't mind coming up here and sitting, you have, yeah, sorry. Name an address, so it's easier for people at home to hear you. Thank you.
Danielle Ziette, twelve Hillside Drive. I'm here for two things. I don't ever come to these meetings, so I don't know exactly what is said, what is done. So that's part of my reason for being here. The first is the Osgood, not the playground, the field at the playground. It's a piece of dirt.
Okay, so.
With rocks where the children go out to recess twice a day.
Yep.
And have to play.
So two things I just want to tell you about how this works.
Yep.
So because these are matters not on the agenda.
Yep.
We're not going to comment on anything.
Okay.
School matters really belong in the, in the, at the school committee level, but we can follow up with you after this meeting about bringing whatever your overall two concerns are to the appropriate people. So we just can't.
I was told that it was part of the town.
Well, the town does own the fields, but management is a little bit different. So we'll, you know, we'll take in your comments and then we'll help direct you.
That's, I guess that's part of another point. Not who to, you know, who to go to.
Yep.
To.
Pretty.
And then the second thing is the snack shack at Milliken Field.
In specifically.
Over, over a year ago, it was to be completed in September of last year. There's been, I have, I haven't heard anything. I've heard a couple of things just through the vine that it's going to happen, it's not going to happen, it's completely changed, we're going back to the neighbors again to ask them again. The porta potties are unacceptable, especially when you're up there all day. There's only two porta potties, there's a lot of people that come and go, no handicap accessibility. That was the reason for the snack shack, the reason for the upgrade. The thing is falling apart.
So great, thank you.
It's horrible.
So that is, that is something that I know Town Meeting voted funds for and we can put it on a future agenda for discussion unless you have an update.
Come by my office tomorrow. That has been a much longer and more tortured road than I could ever have imagined.
You're, you're telling me, as, as a parent of someone.
No, it's definitely something that.
Because I thought the money was there, so that's why.
Well, without going belaboring it tonight, there are some others, this is kind of, the money's got to be reauthorized by town, by special town meeting. No objection from capital budget. I'm sorry, come near the president.
Okay, okay.
Because there was a time limit, and again, come by my office tomorrow.
See, I was told that and I told not.
Yeah, no, no, it's going to happen, why don't you give a call or swing by tomorrow?
Okay.
And I'll have to talk to you.
Sounds good.
So you were here for our review, so the, the best thing is to call Tracy?
Okay.
Yes. For you to have a great extension five oh one and get on Chris's calendar or.
That sounds good.
All right, thanks Danielle.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I believe we have the introduction of a new staff person from the schools.
Yes, it's from the school, so I apologize if it, it makes it seem as if, it's after the, it's a fancy title, but it's a school's fancy title.
Do the, the school committee members that are in the audience, do they want to come up or, no? Okay. So, hi, if you'd like to introduce yourself and tell us a bit about your background and welcome to the community.
Sure, thank you very much and good evening. My name is Michael McMillan and I recently, I've been appointed as the new director of finance and operations for the school department, the first. So my predecessor was a business manager and they retired the title with him and so, and the first. Hey, so prior to this, I worked in a similar position in Wareham Public Schools. And before that, I worked in, for Barstool Public Schools, doing a different role. And prior to that, I lived and worked in London in the U K. So I am now in my fourth week.
I was just going to ask, yeah, fourth week.
Fourth week, yes. And so far it's all been very well, also.
Great, well, welcome aboard. I mean, Kevin or Paul, you.
A question, you worked in the home office?
Yeah.
Yeah, what did you do in the home office?
So I, the home office is a bit like the Department of Homeland Security here and I worked in a couple of different roles. So I was a civil servant, so non-political employee. I worked for a while, I worked for the minister for immigration, so that's a bit like an undersecretary of state and I ran his office, so I would spend a lot of time with him. We would, you know, accompany him, provide him with briefing, anything he had to, make sure he got to meetings and that kind of thing. So that was good, so that was a quite, you know, it's very, although I wasn't political, it was a very political environment. So it was a, it was, you know, that's really helpful in my current position. So again, I'm not a, you know, I'm not political, but I do recognize that we were only working for the school committee and for the town and recognize the pressures and responsibilities of the, of the public. So yeah, so and I also worked in, I also worked, and I also worked in the home office developing policy around immigration and I also worked in the central finance team as well for a while. So one of the benefits of working in that kind of big organization is. So, one of the benefits of working in that kind of big organization is you get to experience all sorts of environments.
Steve, Jack, anything?
Welcome aboard.
Thanks very much.
Your political skills will be put to test.
Yeah, well, I was impressed. Chris, the other day I was being introduced, also presented his finance awards. I'm not sure if that was the.
Well, it was just really coincidental, yes, very good. I do want to say so, so I was very grateful to schools that, you know, I brought myself and Don into the interview process. And it turns out that Don actually audited.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, in his prior role. So, they knew each other, they talked.
Inside information.
And they've already met multiple times.
Yeah.
So, they, they, they've already developed a very strong, working relationship.
Yeah.
So, I'm very happy. We actually went to lunch, the three of us, a couple weeks ago. I had a nice, great conversation. So, I'm very much looking forward to Michael's joining us. I think he's going to be a great addition. And I think we've already, we've already found some areas we can continue developing, which is great. And I want to thank the school committee for making a great hire.
We, we look forward to working collaboratively.
We, I just have a question on the operations part of the title.
Yep.
What, what sort of oversight does that, what?
Uh, so that includes, so that includes transportation, food service, and facilities and maintenance. Obviously, the Town Department, Mark Kelly and co, they do a lot of the work on our buildings, but also with the custodians. So, I work closely with Mark. He's scaling the work and arranging what gets done and prioritizing the work. And then we also have our own custodian cleaning and, and everyday stuff.
Great. All right. Thanks for being here.
Congratulations.
Welcome, Michael.
Thanks for staying late tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to licenses, permits, and events. The first one is Safe Harbor Coalition for a International Overdose Awareness Day vigil on Friday, August thirtieth. Is Nicole here? You want to come on up?
All right.
Just, if you could just summarize what you're going to do.
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
The hot seat.
Yep.
All right. So, I'm Nicole Garrity, the Program Director for Safe Harbor Coalition. And August thirty first is the International Overdose Awareness Day. And we were looking to recognize this day on August thirtieth, so the day before. Primarily to allow residents of the community to come together and not interrupt their travel plans for Labor Day weekend. Do you want me to go in depth?
Yeah, if you could just kind of give the specifics of what you're going to do with the vigil. And you're just looking basically for an event permit for Friday, August thirtieth, beginning at six thirty P M. Just kind of what's going to happen.
Yeah, so what we're planning on having is, it will, it will run from six forty-five P M to seven forty-five P M, the actual event. But we'll need to set up, there will be a microphone and speakers that we discuss with the Recreation Department. There'll be three speakers, candles, where we'll invite those who have lost loved ones to come and light a candle in their remembrance. And we spoke with Chief Sylvia and got his blessing. I believe he can sign it, you know, if not.
You did?
Okay. And so, from there, all, all we are really looking for is the permit to use the commons and also parking here at Town Hall, if that's allowable.
Sure.
It's after hours.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the Safe Harbor International Overdose Awareness Day vigil Friday, August thirtieth from six o'clock to eight P M?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Great, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. You're welcome, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Habitat for Humanity Bike Ride. Martine Taylor, you here?
Oh, I'm here in a place.
You're here in your place. You want to come up and just introduce yourself for the record and tell us a little bit about what you're doing?
My name's Joe Regan. I live in the town here, so you may know my, not my name, my face.
Yeah.
But I'm here representing Habitat as, this year we'll be riding our twelfth ride for Habitat. In the past, it's gone off without incident, very little impact to the town. If history is any indication, we could probably expect between sixty and seventy-five riders. But that's stretched out over the course of fifty miles, so it's really pretty thin. It's not a big pack of people. There are no rest areas in Cohasset, so it's kind of a trickle through town. And it's September fifteenth.
And whereabouts in town?
Well, there's a map that I, I did provide previously. I have a copy here if that's helpful. But it enters, we come up through Situate, Border Street, then, let's see, continue to Summer Street. Then there's three different courses, so some diverge. And depending on which is the course you're taking, fifty Route twenty-five or fifteen. Let's see. Continue to do a Summer Street, Margen Street, Atlantic, Jerusalem, to Summit Ave, then over to Hall.
Yeah, you're going to get over the bridge.
We did provide, I'm sorry, I read the, as it's planned.
Yep. Yep.
But we will comply with the detour that's set up up each street. And we did, as I said, we provided a revised map.
Yeah, it's just hard for us to read and also people just, that are listening, that's okay. That's the only reason I made you, you outline the thing.
But there will be an even smaller number of people, of the sixty or seventy-five people that I say have been the average number of riders. The last two years, there've been sixteen or seventeen that have done the fifty mile route. The fifty mile route is the only route that goes through, would approach that detour.
Okay.
The others come up and go over Gannett, over Beechwood and, and that route as opposed to following over through Hall.
Any of the selectmen have any questions?
No, just an observation that the, both the police and fire department have already reviewed it. And fire department actually makes them know that the event to be supported by the off-duty staff.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the twelfth annual ride for Habitat of South Shore Habitat for Humanity on Saturday, September fifteenth, beginning of Park Summer around nine thirty A M?
So moved.
Is it a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, all set.
There is a part B.
Oh, sorry. Have we jumped the gun?
No, as a, as a nonprofit, we did submit a request to have the fee waived. And I was told I would need to ask about that at this point.
That's a second, that is a second vote anyway, so. Anybody know what the fee is?
I have to check, but I'd love to rip it off.
How much is it?
A hundred and fifteen.
What did we do last year? Do you remember?
I don't know. We, we go through six towns and a number of them waive it. I can't recall whether Cohasset did or not.
I would simply, again, note that at this point, the biggest output that we would anticipate would be traffic control and safety. And fire and police both note in the application that they anticipate no duty officers are going to be required. So.
It's minimal impact, okay. Would anybody like to make a motion to waive the hundred and fifteen dollar permit fee?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. It's waived. Can we put your check up?
Great, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
Um, and Lenny's Hideaway. We have an application for the Common Victular's license for Lenny's Hideaway. Lenny's Hideaway, R V L V Inc., D B A Lenny's Hideaway at Eighth State Bridge Way. That's the former Perch One Four Three, which we're going to be calling it Lenny's Hideaway. But I'm just trying to let everybody know where that is. So, if you want to just, I know you were here just a couple of weeks ago, just kind of update us on how things are going and.
Just clarify, these common and entertainment, so I don't know if we're doing those two separate.
They are two separate licenses, so we'll both go separately. Thank you.
Okay, so just recap. My name's Derek Burke and this is my wife Stephanie Burke and we're going to be the owners there. So, which one should we do first, the, the?
Do the common vic?
The common vic. Yeah, so hours of operation will be three to eleven, three to eleven during the weekdays and then eleven to eleven on the weekends.
Close Monday and Tuesday.
Close Monday and Tuesday.
Okay.
And again, that's, that is what is planned. And as we all know, that own businesses staffing can be an issue. And if we find that as we approach our opening, there is an issue, we will come to you beforehand and let you know, hey, you know, we can't start off opening as, you know, brunch, just to be full disclosure. We don't anticipate that, but I don't want it to come as a shock before having to, I mean, our staff. But we, we choose to open brunch in the beginning until we can, yeah.
Do you have any anticipated start date?
We're hoping in October. We're still waiting for some permits to come through and some licenses to come through.
Okay.
But again, there's not much of a build-out because we really like the space as it is. It's a beautiful space. So, once we get our permits, we should be able to start moving along pretty, pretty quickly. And we're very excited, so we just want to.
Yeah, I know, I can imagine. We are, we are as well. Okay, any questions from the selectmen on the common vic license?
No, I think they're chill.
Is, is there a motion to approve a common victular's license for R V L V Inc., D B A Lenny's Hideaway?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then an entertainment license, if you can just kind of describe what you anticipate would, license would be used for?
Okay, I think to give a synopsis of what we would like to do with our entertainment license is basically a carryover of the business itself, which has, you know, become a part of the community. One thing we've done in our other businesses is we've got a big record collection, so we like to play a lot of records at, at the establishment, which creates a lot of conversation among people. People like to see the vinyl, hear the vinyl, next thing you know.
Do the Beatles backwards?
Yeah, all, all of that stuff happens. And it also helps, you know, the community starts bringing in their own records, because a lot of people don't have record players. And next thing you know, it's kind of a vital part of our daily life there. So, that, that's part of our entertainment. There's a lot of records that we would like to play.
You know, it's pretty, which we've done in the past, very regulated, which not, you know, where it's something that gets out of control. And then the rule we have is that you have to play the whole side. You can't sit there and try and guide us to find one song. We've got to listen to the whole side of the record. So, that's, that, it always makes for fun when people come in, you know. And, and as he said, people start talking to each other, having fun.
It's half chuckles and half good music. A lot of Tom Jones gets played, you know, things like that.
Yep, yeah.
Brings a lot of whimsy. Yeah, it's really, it, it happens. Also, and then of course, the, the live, the live entertainment is, you know, we'd like to be community-based to start. Local bands, ties to the community. My wife mentioned before how we would hopefully do like an open mic, a youth open mic day during the weekend sometimes, so we could bring in children and have fun with that and have, have a, have dinner or lunch or brunch. We'd be finishing up early any entertainment. It wouldn't go late, you know, ten thirty or eleven would be done. So.
Okay, okay. So, you do want to space some live music?
We would like to, absolutely. There's a lot of good musicians out there.
There sure are, yeah.
And then we could, again, you know, talk to everybody, figure out what, what requires an additional permit or additional approval and what would be, okay, once we start going, we start having some of these types, maybe actually you don't, you can get away, you don't need to come and, you know, get on the docket for this, or we'd like you on the docket for these types of entertainments. And fine tune that as we continue our relationship together.
I think the entertainment license that we offer is for live music. So.
So, we would definitely have live music.
Okay. All right.
Can I clarify?
Yep, please.
That does not preclude playing music, just bad music.
Okay.
Right.
Understood. But Tom Jones left a knock, didn't he?
No, but that's, that's actually okay. Well, Tom Jones is okay.
I like that.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions on the board? Pretty good. Is there a motion to approve an entertainment license for R V L V Inc., D B A Lenny's Hideaway?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, we'll be, we'll be awaiting.
Thank you very much. We're really, really excited. We're really excited.
Thank you.
Let us, let us know when you're ready.
Thank you. We'll bring our records.
Please do, yeah.
They regret it.
Just let me know when that open mic, like, is.
I have it.
Okay, South Shore Hellenic Church, come on up. South Shore Hellenic Church, Greek festival is here for a one-day liquor license for August eighteenth and nineteenth. That's coming right up.
It's a two-day.
Yep, a two, so it's a two one-day licenses. If you could just introduce yourself with your name and just give us a little summary of your.
Sure. I'm Cynthia Adidas. I'm a resident of Cohasset and a member of the church. And I'm here to let you know that we've done church festivals for many years, since probably nineteen eighty. And we've had very successful ones. We've had no incidents at all with serving beer and wine. And that's what we intend to do again this year. We do have a police detail. We are not going to be operating after eight o'clock on Saturday or six o'clock on Sunday, so we wind up pretty early. We also serve food, so there's food along with the beverages. We will have some entertainment also. Nothing live though.
Yeah, okay. Board, any questions?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for Saturday, Saturday, August eighteenth from eleven A M to eight P M for South Shore Hellenic Church?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And secondly, for a one-day liquor license for the nineteenth, for, Sunday, the nineteenth, from one P M to six P M. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. We're all set.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Coming to join us.
It's a great time of, of food times, yeah.
I know.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along, we have some committee appointments. I'm just going to read the names and if you're here, if, if you wouldn't mind just coming forward. Lee Darst, you here? I think so. Abigail Elvis, I'm here. Marty Charles is not here. Jeff Hartwell, not here. Okay. So, these are, and we still have a few more committees that, with applications that we need to round out. But right now, these are people that have either been recommended from a board as a, as a representative of that board or people that we have met. So, Nancy Lee Darst came in a few weeks ago, or about a month ago, for a position on the zoning board of appeals. She has gone to some of their meetings and has met with the members and just has their blessing. So, I would like a motion to appoint Nancy Lee Darst to the zoning board of appeals for a, is it a three-year term? It's an associate position for three years.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nancy, congratulations. The Recreation Commission has, would like to recommend Abigail Elvis to the Harbor Committee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Abigail. Marty Char, Charles has submitted for reappointment to the Board of Registars. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, Recreation Commission has recommended Jeff Hartwell to the Open Space and Recreation Committee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, I'm just going to take the one breather.
So, we're talking to committees?
Yep. We're, we're actually doing pretty well. There's a few still to finalize. Okay. Okay. Hold on, I just got to get my hearing notices in front of me. I have a paper. Okay, we have a public hearing that was posted for seven ten. Council Jim Lampke is joining us. I'm going to read the public hearing notice and then I'll invite the parties from A and S Restaurants LLC, D B A Atlantica, to come up. This is a continuation of a hearing. The Cohasset Board of Selectmen acting as a liquor licensing authority will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July tenth, two thousand eighteen, at seven ten P M in the selectman's office, Town Hall, Forty-One Highland. will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July tenth, two thousand eighteen at seven ten PM in the selectman's office, Town Hall, forty one Highland Ave. This is a continuation of that hearing. The hearing is to consider the application of A and S Restaurants LLC, DBA Atlantica Restaurant located at forty four forty six Border Street for a change of manager. The proposed manager is Heinrich Lucians. The public is invited to offer public input on the proposed in writing in advance of the public hearing or in person at the hearing. Um, so I would like to invite any representatives from A and S to come up to the table, introduce yourself, and we'll take it from there.
I'm Heinrich Lucians.
Hi Heinrich.
My name is Michael Gillis and I'm from Bakowski, and I represent the LLC.
Michael, do you mind repeating your lock firm again?
Yes, Gillis, G.I.L.L.I.S. and Bakowski. So it's a tough one. B.A.K.O.F.S.T.Y.
Great, thank you. Um, so, um, again, this is a continued hearing, um, that opened on July tenth. Uh, we've held it open. One of the concerns of the board was, um, the first one, Mr. Lucians wasn't able to attend because he was out of town. And then we met with him, um, at our last meeting, um, and determined that we wanted a little more information in terms of regular, um, manager hours, um, schedule of operations and kind of the, um, you know, who were the assistant managers if, if, um, Mr. Lucians wasn't on, on property. So, um, I'll turn it over to members of the board if you have any questions. Um, we have received, um, in our packet, and I think it's been updated, um, at least once since a few weeks ago, um, that we got it, um, operation hours for Atlantica and, um, a comprehensive manager schedule as well as contact numbers for all the managers.
So, just for setting the procedural stage here, so after the last meeting, a letter was sent detailing the concerns, um, and, and it was received. Uh, we received a, a, a quick response. Uh, Mr. Lucians has come into the office multiple times and also been delivering things to the police station directly as he should on hours and, and updates. Uh, Chief Quigley is also here as well, uh, to, to answer questions about the application and the, the process of the last few weeks. Um, and, uh, uh, the, so you, there, there was also one page in the application that was, that was some misinformation on that was updated, uh, correct? Uh, so that's been updated. Uh, thank you for catching that initially, Steve. Uh, so that was, that was in the letter that was sent to them. That was, that's been fixed. Uh, and, uh, so, you know, over the last few weeks, since Mr. Lucians has been on board, there's been a consistent communication. Uh, uh, there's been calls, there's been visits. I've, I've personally run into him multiple times. I know it's been, uh, irregularly with Jen. So, uh, I do wanna say that there's clearly been a, a real effort to improve communication and to pass along information, sorry.
I just wanna pass on that. I had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Senior and with council, and I've only recently been involved with this. I got a copy of the letter, the three issues that were addressed, I believe, have all been addressed. And I'm here just to let you know that, um, if you need any assistance other than what you're already getting from them, I'm, I'm just here to help. Um, I'm, I'm available and I've given that contact information to the town manager and council. So, um, if they need to contact me for anything in order to give you guys a more immediate response to any issues that come up that you feel aren't being addressed directly by the LLC. I know that with Henry, uh, on, we've been in a much more open communication, which it seems to be a very positive relationship with the town, and I'm just here not to interfere with that, but to try to, uh, add on to that if there's anything else that you need in addition to what you're not already getting, like there's the, you know, more technical legal issues that you need me to address or anything else on your behalf. And I haven't worked in town government as a young lawyer, I understand what you guys put your time into, um, and I appreciate it. So I'm gonna take any more of your time.
Thank you. Steve?
Um, Heinrich, s- uh, since August, the August two meeting, um, and the delivery of your letter with respect to operating hours for the establishment, um, how is your adherence to that been?
Well, we're adherent to it, yeah.
Yeah.
We're adhering to it.
Okay, so we, you've been since delivery of that letter, which was, uh, forgive me, August eighth. I can open a lot of screens, but I can't figure out where it is.
The first letter was July twenty sixth.
No, well, I'm, I'm actually thinking in, in follow up to the August, is it August two? No. The July twenty sixth meeting.
Yeah, it was, yeah, we sent out the email.
We received, we received the notification, uh, from A and S with respect to assistant managers and intended operating hours. Because the question at that point was, what are the firm closing hours as opposed to just to close? Um, and so my question, because we've received communication from citizens pointing out that the, the facility hasn't been open. And so that's the reason for my question. It's nice to state the operating hours. Has, has the facility been open?
Yes, the, the facility was closed due to problems that we had, and I turned that in immediately. We had air conditioning problems that we need to, uh, that we need to land with on the heat, but otherwise we've been open exactly as scheduled.
Okay, so the, the, the air conditioning issue is resolved?
Yes, it has been.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And now, second question. Chief, are there any incidents that the board should know about?
Uh, nothing, nothing new.
Thank you. I have nothing for it.
Jack, do you have any questions or comments or?
Uh, why don't you come to me last?
Paul?
Uh, yeah, the, the two things that I always consider about our operating hours, so as long as that gets updated regularly there's air conditioning problems, anything else, um, let us know. And the other thing, which I, I do wanna emphasize, if you're closing, make sure if there's staff on premise late, just to let the, um, police department know, um, from a safety point of view. Um, it is one of the worries and things when it's very late and there's a lot of cash involved with waiters and bartenders. Um, that if they are late, doing inventory is the typical thing, um, just to let the, uh, the police know, just so they can be aware. Those are my two concerns.
Kevin?
Yes, um, Mr. Lucians, my concern was, um, your own involvement with the business. Are you full time, um, you know, what place, where are you, what are you exactly, uh, doing in terms of the management, your hours and your commitment to, to be there? That was the concern I had a few, a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, I think I asked you that question then, so I'll reiterate it again now.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fully committed to take care of the things that you need to take care of and to adhere to the rules and regulations set forth by the town.
And you're working full time? Is that at least forty hours a week? Is that correct?
Not alwa- we're not always open forty hours a week.
So you're only working when they're open?
More, more than that, yes.
Cause do, don't our regulations say that the license hold, what does it say there? Isn't it supposed to be forty hours a week, or maybe I heard that wrong?
When the license is being exercised.
Yeah, the manager has to be on premises at least as many hours as when the license is being exercised, meaning the alcohol is being served. Often, there's more hours.
Yep, that's what I was saying. Okay, um, okay, those are my questions.
Um, just, just to reiterate, your current operating hours are, are Wednesday through Friday, five to ten, Saturday, uh, noon to ten? And Sunday's ten to three?
Yeah.
Um, Jack?
Um, w- w- Henry, would you mind just sharing with the public what the hours are going to be going forward? I, I'm not sure people in town understand the operational offer, hours for the premise.
The hours that you just quoted are correct, and they're posted at the Atlantica counter door.
So, um, i- do you have any affiliation at all with, uh, Cohasset Harbor Inn and the, uh, and the, the restaurant there?
No.
Who's doing, who's running that operation? Do you know?
I couldn't tell you.
Okay. And so far, no problem adhering to the schedule?
Not whatsoever.
You anticipate any problems going forward?
No, I don't, no.
Okay, that's all I have.
Great, um.
Excuse me, along that line, so we're just talking Atlantica here.
Oh, Atlantica.
So it'd be, it's a different, uh, license holder for Red Lion, it's a different holder. For Mr. Ghul, I think is the one.
Robert Ghul.
Yeah, it's for Atlantica. So, the, here's your responsibilities last time that you were with us, I think it was Red Lion Inn, wasn't it? For some period of time.
I started the Red Lion Inn in two thousand fourteen.
Right, yeah.
Yes.
Right, I want to stay focused on, on Atlantica, on timing, right, on this manager, um, thing. Um, the only thing unless the board has any other comments to make, it is a public hearing. I do wanna just open it up if anybody has any comments from the public. Um, so if anybody from the public would like to speak, you will have to step forward and identify yourself. Anybody looking around? Okay, great, no other comments. Okay, um, is the board, um, satisfied to make a motion to close the hearing? Take a vote?
Do you close the hearing first or, um, accept the appointment of manager first?
Well, typically you don't need to close, uh, the hearing, this type of the hearing. You would just normally proceed to motion whether to approve or not, uh, the application for the new manager.
Okay.
Okay, is, is there a motion to, um, approve the application for, um, manager Heinrich Lucians for A and S Restaurants LLC, DBA Atlantica Restaurant at forty four forty six Border Street?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Amazed? Okay, congratulations.
Good, welcome back.
Thank you, welcome back. And we look forward to brisk business, uh, the, uh, next couple of, uh, months of summer.
Really actually look forward to your contribution.
Likewise, thank you.
I've left my information with, uh, both council and town manager if you need to get that, if you have any reason.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Gillis. Um, I'm just gonna ask, we did post a secondary hearing in case we weren't able to come to a satisfactory resolution of the continued hearing. Do we need to do anything with that?
I think you can just note that in view of approval of the license application, uh, under the first hearing, the second hearing is somewhat moot. We did not proceed further.
Okay, so, um, so we noted a second hearing that was posted for seven ten PM, um, um, will not go forward due to a satisfactory resolution for the, um, change of manager place, uh, hearing.
That effectively indefinite continuance.
Uh, in essence, an indefinite continuance, but I think that should circumstances arise, it would have to be renoticed and everything else.
Right, okay.
Uh, you, you could vote to withdraw the hearing, the second hearing, but I think the record implies that.
Would you go more comfortable?
Yeah. But move that we withdrew, withdraw the, um, I'm sorry, the, for, for the public hearing for.
Move that we withdraw the public hearing, uh, posted for seven ten before possible disciplinary action on all alcohol, all alcoholic beverage license, A and S Restaurants LLC, DBA Atlantica.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, withdrawn.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Lucian.
Thank you.
Always a pleasure.
Yes.
Likewise. Thanks very much.
You're right back upstairs, yeah.
Yeah, how about that? Um,
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just gonna get, um, is the harbinger group here, or do we wanna, are you here? Okay.
That's that.
What?
Everybody ready to keep rolling?
They're right, right there.
So we're just gonna bring in our next, um, agenda item is a presentation by the harbinger group. Now, without doing too much summarizing, um, they are here to present, um, some ideas that they have regarding the harbor redevelopment. And I'll leave the audience, the color to them.
Diane, could you ask them to speak up a little bit too? I'm having a hard time hearing anybody.
The people here, I know with your back to them.
Yeah.
I'll do so.
Hi, Tim.
Hey, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So if I could ask, um, whoever's doing the presentations to come in, sit down first, get cozy, uh, introduce yourself, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
And we've had a request from the audience to please speak up, cause it's hard when you're, you are speaking to us, um, with your back.
Where do you want the boards to be facing?
Right here would be great.
Okay.
So Fran, you may wanna move a seat over, the boards are gonna be right.
You have a presentation to show, pick the board.
Great, they're up there too.
Oh, okay.
Seat in, get comfortable.
So, welcome.
Thank you. Hi, Paul. Jack, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
As soon as the setup stops, so have you introduce yourself.
Okay.
Okay, welcome. I'm gonna turn the floor over to you. So introductions first and then.
Sure. I'll stand up, I guess. Good evening, uh, my name is Daniel Mura, Department of Harbinger Development. Uh, and we are here to give you an overview of our ideas and development proposals for certain parcels in the harbor. Um, just a little bit of disclosure, I'm not a Cohasset resident, but my wife is from, was born and raised in Cohasset. And my mother-in-law and sister-in-law still live here, so I think I bring an outside perspective, but still have very strong feelings for Cohasset and care very much about the town. Um, the properties that are shown in, uh, these four, not this, not Mill River, but these four, we are under contract to purchase from the current owner with a pending closing at the end of the year, late December. Um, and, you know, it's a really unique opportunity for sure, um, and the timing's also excellent. Um, as we came to these properties, um, you know, there, what we discovered, there was already a harbor master planning process underway. Um, and so there's a little bit of background about Harbinger Development. Uh, we're active developers in Boston, um, building six hundred and thirty hotel rooms right now in construction in the city. Um, there are three Hilton brands. Uh, so this is, um, you know, we, we can, you know, manage this process, but it is a very complicated, uh, you know, opportunity. And just as a little bit of background, I think that we were asked to give a little background of who Harbinger was, so you can see that. But this is just one of our projects that we're doing now. It's on the Greenway. It's a Hilton project. It's called Hilton Canopy. This is two hundred and fifteen rooms, but it involves a lot of complex planning with the Freedom Trail, the Haymarket Push Cards, uh, the Blackstone Block, which is historic, the Greenway, Fanny Hall Marketplace. So we, we've spent years working through that. Um, and so I think that's relevant to, you know, some of the things we're gonna talk about tonight with the planning. Um, the, you know, our premise that coming to these properties really was that, you know, the two main parcels that we're gonna talk about tonight, um, the hotel, you know, our, our view is really that's sort of a failed business model. And that really since almost nineteen seventy four, when it was built as a hotel, um, it hasn't worked and doesn't really work in this location for a number of reasons. But for ten plus years, it's been running at below fifty, fifty percent occupancy, um, and that's not sustainable. And we know, we know hotels and we wouldn't reposition that property or rebrand it. So in looking at everything we're looking to purchase, um, the starting point is really the idea that residential as a use should be included in the waterfront zone to really create a vibrant, mixed-use harbor. And, and, and that's one of the things that's causing some problems. I think everyone would agree that, you know, the current harbor condition is, is struggling and is really not serving the residents of the town for restaurants and better water access and, and a number of things. So, um, Atlantica has its own set of issues, um, kind of an outdated business model too. It's a sixteen and a half thousand square foot building that, um, is a restaurant and function hall, but it's all one building. And so it makes it very difficult. I think it was really successful at a time when it was serving five hundred lunches a day in kind of a different kind of format. That's not how people operate now, and people wanna be able to go there and get a meal and, and have that function facility be discreet. And so we've got some ideas around that, but really the i- what we're talking about, and we'll get into more detail, is, um, you know, ultimately talking about an overlay district on these parcels, this one which we don't own, but these two, which are in the waterfront zone too, just simply add residential as an allowed use. And if that happens, all these other things can happen. Um, as.
And just for the viewers, it's, it's Cohasset Harbor Inn, it's the Atlantica, and potentially the, the Marina, although you.
Right, for the overly district. That's, that's what we, again, we don't, we don't own Mill River. We've been discussing with the Roy's, you know, teaming up. And we know them and it's a possibility, but we're really got our, are focused on Cohasset Harbor Inn and Atlantica. and we know them, and it's a possibility, but we're really got our, are focused on Cohasset Harbor Inn and Atlantica. And so the discussions with, and Susan Hoadley, who you'll meet in a moment, um, the discussions with the planning department and others of what that overlay district should be, is the proposals, that it's these three parcels, is a discrete, uh, you know, effort for the overlay district. You know, we really want to do a public-private partnership, and that term's used a lot, but if you look at the private piece, then the public piece, then the private piece, it's sort of like links in a chain. And if we're going to invest and revitalize the pieces that we can control and be successful, we need to work with the town simultaneously to also focus on the public pieces and how those are successful. So, um, for instance, you know, and Susan will talk about this more, we wanna, you know, improve this whole situation with a harbor walk that could, that will pass behind what is currently the har, the hotel, which will be a residential building, on the water side, then pass along and through the Atlantica property, and start to break down that property into smaller pieces as opposed to sort of one large structure. Uh, we wanna create better water access, uh, which is a result of the harbor walk by getting onto the water edge. Uh, we wanna create better opportunities for residents, for dining, restaurants, living on the water. So all those things we are planning for and, and, and look to deliver, but it all really triggers with this idea that residential, because if we can't get residential in this mix, and I think that, we, we, we think that it's not viable, but the feedback even from the harbor committee and their master planners and other examples of successful harbors or locations like this, where you introduce that, that piece along with restaurant and retail and function and marina and boat club, all those pieces, that, that missing piece of residential is what kind of makes it all work, so, um, we, we put together initially a, a very strong best-in-class team with Cavanaugh Consulting, um, and Hoadley Martinez Architects, who are local right here, Stagecoach Way, and Susan will walk you through the, the planning ideas. I'll also just add that the properties are influenced heavily by state and federal issues, as you're probably familiar, so DEP has chapter ninety-one licenses on both parcels, or the properties have chapter ninety-one licenses. I've done chapter ninety-one on one of our hotels in the Seaport, we just got a license six months ago, went through the whole process. We have a, a meeting with Ben Lynch at DEP in September, but that will influence a lot of things. For instance, ground floor uses need facilities of public accommodation, so a residential building here would still have a restaurant on the ground floor and public access. So we can talk about that in more detail, but the other big piece is FEMA, and you're, you're probably familiar with that too. This site is actually in pretty good shape with a FEMA flood, uh, flood plain, flood plain elevation, the Atlantic site is problematic. It's currently at a elevation ten above mean high water, and FEMA is requiring a fifteen to an eighteen. And that has to be complied with once you, uh, renovate or do improvements to the property beyond fifty percent of its value, which will, we will cause and we will trigger, so, um, we see that as an opportunity to repurpose these and create, really purpose-built buildings that serve the town better and are more viable and sustainable. So, that's the sort of broad overview, what we're, our objectives, and what ultimately is leading towards special town meeting for an overlay to seek that residential piece, that, that will then make all this possible, and if not, we, we, we wouldn't be able to do these things. The last thing I'll say is we've attended a harbor committee meeting with Tim, who's been fantastic in helping guide me through town and giving me advice. Did a brief introduction, brief description of what we're trying to do to the, the group at the harbor committee. We have presented to the planning board, we're going back to the harbor committee this Thursday for a full presentation, which will be similar to this, and then we're going back to the planning board on the twenty-ninth for a return visit to do a presentation of some details that they requested. So, that's the overview, um, with that, I'd have Susan Hoadley, uh, walk you through our planning ideas.
I have a question, you mentioned chapter ninety-one, just for clarification, what actually is that, is that a requirement for federal access of water?
Chapter ninety-one is, uh, mass DEP state law, which essentially governs properties that are within a hundred and fifty feet of, of the water edge or a seawall. And existing conditions are grandfathered, but certain properties that are public or have public use have to have a license, and that license which DEP requires describes what you can and can't do with the property, so, um.
So it's a state license for being able to develop a piece of property?
Right, and so they both have licenses now that allow the hotel use, that allow the restaurant and the marina and, and the function facility. The basic objectives of chapter ninety-one are to provide some governance over what essentially are filled tidallands, which the state views as public land, even though it might be private, it's still kind of public, so it essentially protects the public interest of what can and can't happen. In a simple sense, from a planning standpoint, they don't, they don't allow over fifty-five feet in height, excuse me, I'm on the dinging. And they, they seek to have either water-dependent uses in those areas on the ground floor and/or facilities of public accommodation on the ground floor. Facilities of public accommodation most commonly are restaurants, that's a facility, a bar, public access, lobby, walkthrough. And so what that typically does is sort of prohibits, um, you know, private use of the ground floor of buildings.
Sort of something like Roseworth Marriott, you walk in, there's a walkthrough, there's a restaurant on the, on the ground floor.
Exactly.
So that would be the, an example.
That's right. Want to run them through?
Sure, great.
Do you wanna answer a question now or at the end?
I'd rather wait till the end unless it's really pertinent. Okay. So, do you mind introducing yourself even though?
Yes, um, my name's Susan Hoadley, I live at one seventy-five Hall Street here in town, um, I'm also principal of Hoadley Martinez Architects here in town. And we have been retained by Harbinger to work with them to, um, develop basically a, a, a solid planning concept that does three important things. The first is that fits nicely into the work that the master, town master planning, um, effort has been evolving. The second is to work closely hand-in-hand with the objectives that the harbor committee is developing. And third, to bring a local perspective as to exactly how we use the harbor now in concert with the way that the harbor committee is imagining that we will use it in the future. And so to do this, we work on a couple of scales in order to really think about how to develop these critical parcels. And the first one is a macro scale, it's about thinking about, what is the real approach to the harbor? Well, the real approach to the harbor in Cohasset is from Atlantic, uh, it's from Summer Street, but the real opportunity we see is this quarter down Elm Street. When you're about at Fleming's Pilgrim Bank, you can start to see the Harbor Inn. And that leads us to believe that we have an opportunity to begin to perceive the harbor all the way from the village. That's with the leaves on the trees. So, year-round, the perception of the harbor from the village could be quite extraordinary. Before the hotel went up, we believed that that's what happened. There was an amazing canopy of Elms that came down Elm Street, and that's why it was named that. There are some neighborhood initiatives that are trying to look at developing disease-resistant Elms and restoring that canopy down Elm Street, and if that were true, the way that this beautiful canopy could terminate would be somewhere, you know, somewhere on this site, on the prow of this site, and we'll get to that in a minute, because that comes to this notion of what is this pri, public-private partnership? What are the things that someone who's developing a site can do to really preserve the kinds of things that are valuable within the town and give back, and not just maximize the development on a site? That's one thing. But the main thing is being able to see through this site. It's remarkable when you look at the way that the Harbor Inn presently sits on this site. It is this big. If you look at it in context of everything around it, it's bigger than anything in, in its, in, even in its mapero environment. So, what if we were to say, we could open this up, we could, we could agree to let that be something of a view corridor, straight through, like Roseworth, like Paul, uh, referred to. I think it could be a, a really big step toward welcoming everyone to the harbor, not only when you're at the harbor's edge, but when you're coming from the village. So, the second thing that we started to look at was, how do you really tie all these things together, okay? Well, right now,
When you?
take your bike down, or you walk down, or you drive down here, it, there's just a blockage by this, by the, by the Harbor Inn. If you could peek through, but then start to imagine being able to really begin to access the harbor along a pedestrian route, it becomes really obvious that what you might wanna start to develop, and this is something that we heard from the harbor committee, is literally a harbor walk that goes all along the edge of the front of the Cohasset Harbor site, goes in front of the Veterans Memorial, across and over the John Smith Memorial, and then cuts through the Atlantic site. And what the development team is willing to give to a public-private partnership is that easement to be able to get across there. Because right now, you've got a can't-get-there-from-here situation where you have to go back out into what the harbor master planner, I think very accurately called this very brutal sun-baked plaza that's in here right now. So, what that would start to do is create a really beautiful pedestrian access around the harbor. So, the second, the second parcel here is the Atlantica parcel. And the buildings that are on there are similarly very massive, okay? They just, it's something like that. It, again, is bigger than anything around it, and what, the input that we received, both from, um, folks at the planning board, but also from Peter Matjack, was that we need to break the scale of these things down. We need to get this back down to the scale that we saw in, say, the nineteen oh-three Cohasset map, or other maps that, that really give this a, a sense of scale where there's not one big massive building that's dominating everything. But rather, the scale becomes something that's more of a, sort of a, a residential grain. And so, we started to look at that, well, I'm gonna show you a zoomed-in version of what those elements could be. Because those elements could also have really critical ways to access the harbor, both near, at, at the end of this harbor walk, it could be, you know, an enhanced way to use the public landing right across now where the Jersey barriers are in front of the Harbor Hotel. Perhaps cutting across the flats here and giving the Veterans Memorial future expansion opportunities in this spot. A harbor walk here that's not simply a painted, um, a painted line in the road or something, where you would have parking that's very discreet from a very nice pedestrian access here, around, uh, the John Smith Park, and then finally, into this area that we're thinking of as a village, if you look at historical pictures of what Atlantica was before Atlantica became the big mass, it was this divided-up, almost little micro-village of buildings. And that's what we started to explore. Bear in mind the massiveness of these buildings when you look at these new diagrams, because what we're proposing is, what we're, what we're proposing in accordance to what the harbor committee, um, is, is recommending, is to create this accessible loop, but also to create a series of stops along the way. And I'm now going to sort of describe what this, uh, this sort of, um, this village could be. On level one, we're looking at, uh, what, to begin with, we're looking at, uh, about thirty-five thousand gross square feet of development. And across that, we have food and beverage, a boat club, a bar, uh, probably some sort of a, a market, like a, a local seafood market, and the old salt house would remain intact here, on the first floor. So you've got a destination that's a pedestrian destination that is enlivened by retail functions that have a, a contemporary appeal. And then on the second floor, um, the continuation of the boat club and the bar, and perhaps a function room, but then some hotel rooms on the second floor here. Here, um, at the, at the Harbor Inn site, we're looking at having a restaurant and re, a res, restaurant on the first floor. It's something that, uh, we've anecdotally heard, uh, heard from as being a very, very, um, popular notion, especially to people in the survo, surrounding neighborhood. And then on level two and level three, we'd be looking at developing that for permanent residential use. So, you know, in sum, what, what we're looking at is tying the Harbor Inn, breaking the scale down, and bringing functions, services, and attractions to the harbor that will support ego tourism, Cohasset day, uh, things for, for the town to use day-to-day, and also, um, a way to just sort of spur the economic development of the harbor itself, is that good?
Yes, sort of an overview. Just a quick question, so, the, the walkway, I'm looking at places like Algonquin, or, um, like Wells Main, or, um, Rockwood, areas where there's walking from one location to another, which is limited, if some of it's cantilevered out, would you be thinking about that as the section between the, the two major properties, and if you can lever the walkway, can you make it wider?
It could, it could, that would have to be studied, and we've actually been looking at, um, different, different solutions to that being, um, you know, parallel or perpendicular, mo, most likely parallel parking deck that is cantilevered, but to, uh, to ease the brutality and the, sort of the safety issues that are happening.
But the, 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 the two private parcels, the harbor walk, we envision on terra firma. So, we would have the building set back enough facing the water that the harbor walk would walk right in front of the building essentially.
So, like Algonquin then?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not familiar with Algonquin, but.
It's right on the water and, and there's a walkway that's probably.
And then whatever that finishes, well, you know, we're, you know, not there yet, obviously, we work with the town on what that finishes, the objective finishes it, you know, one of those pavers, or if there's crushed, or if it's whatever that material is in the lighting and the benching, but, and the benches. And then on Atlantica, m, most of the property is terra firma. There isn't much that's out on to the, the piers and the pilings, and the idea that this harbor walk traces through that site, and you can navigate through, um, those uses on a lower level, that would also be on, on earth, you know, it wouldn't be on a, on a pier.
One question I have, and I think it probably will, it's probably a whole nother separate conversation to be had about this in relation to the harbor committee, and I think we're gonna get an update from them sometime in, in September, but parking, you know, in, in this, because parking is an issue, and parking requires unfortunately, pavement, and, um, you know, I love the idea of green space and harbor walk and, and, and smaller buildings, and I think your description of the mass that is, that exists there in those two places is really important to keep in mind, because they're huge, and, um, but have you considered parking especially?
Yeah, parking, parking's critical, obviously, and we're, we're kind of blessed with, both parcels have a, a lot of parking now, and we're actually sort of shrinking the footprints to some degree. degree already. That's by nature of the products that we're building, but also part of the planning objective to kind of scale those down a little bit. So both sites already have between fifty and, I think there's fifty spots on both parcels currently, surface lot. But we also are purchasing eighty-seven Elm Street, which is this parcel right here, okay? And that has fifty surface spots as well. That was important to the hotel operations as valet.
Yep.
So we, we're looking to, sort of a balancing act between zoning and market. And so the residential building, currently, we're thinking of approximately forty units of residential units. And we're thinking maybe we do one and a half per unit as a parking ratio. Some people don't need two, some people don't need any, depends, we'll probably have a mix of smaller units to larger units. So if we do that, we think we can self-park that building sustainable on that site. And then in terms of the uses of, at the Atlantica site, we think that large parking lot, which we're primarily maintaining. And also, what's interesting about the FEMA, is that the FEMA elevation makes the first floor elevation has to be at fifteen in the middle and eighteen to the right. So actually, it's open, so we'll probably park potentially under that, and we also wanna preserve the view that everyone loves, they park over there with their cup of coffee and look out. So we're studying that now with Cavanaro, exactly getting that right, making sure we're not way up, we're confident that we aren't. We're comfortable that we're gonna be able to self-park the projects on the parcels, and then we, of course, have eighty-seven Elm, which we think will maintain a bunch of parking there ultimately.
And is, is that like the dirt lot that's kind of behind the Legion? There's like another little building that's kind of, that's right there, yep?
But it's all, it's all paved.
Oh, it is?
Almost from like edge to edge, the whole thing is paved.
Okay.
In good shape, but it's paved.
And I would just say from, you know, there's a couple of things that I've mentioned many times I didn't get to sort of express, but the bigger planning objectives are that the hotel now, in addition to it not being a sustainable business model, it's in, it's tucked right into a residential neighborhood. And so we think that a residential use is a more respectful presence in that area. And we've heard a lot of the feedback, people being concerned about noise there, and wedding parties, and people out in the parking lot, and that if we introduce this residential use, which is what we really need to trigger the entire program, that residential use then is compatible with its residential very nearby running neighborhood. And at the same time, we put, we put more mixed uses in here to make that really engine run and feed itself. So that's sort of the big picture plan from the development standpoint. So it's more sustainable on a twenty-four, seven, you know, on a year-round basis.
I have a question.
Yep, go ahead.
So, under this design, then, could someone be able to walk all the way down Elm Street, and then right on to the, that walkway, and, and then over down towards Atlantica and so forth, so that would be a continuous walkway with someone who come from town?
Yes.
Absolutely.
They could walk down Elm Street, they could see the harbor, they could then walk onto the walkway that you're creating?
Correct.
All the way down and back again?
Yeah, and the, another strength of that concept is the, the sort of traditional functions that that will serve. Kids riding from the village down to the sailing club in the summer. This will be a much safer, much more protected route.
They'll be able to ride bicycles on that way as well? So you're visuring also that, that path which is now private is gonna become public?
Public access.
Public access.
It's private, but it's public access.
Do you?
Yeah. And that goes back to Paul's question about Chapter Ninety-One. The property now, I mean, if you think about Boston Harbor, the Harbor Towers, that's the example of why they created the Chapter Ninety-One process. So you take a big piece of land, you get it, you fence it off, and no one can go in there unless you're an owner, or you are a renter or something. So you have to walk around the parcel, and that whole thing's just grandfunk, there's nothing you can do about it. The Cohasset Harbor Inn property now does not require, we could redevelop it and not... Chapter Ninety, the license already doesn't require.
Right.
That, but we think to make a residential project successful, and to make the tie-in to the harbor, and the activities of uses of the harbor successful, we want that harbor walk there.
Yeah, it actually would be good for the residents, too.
I think so.
They would want that.
So that, that would be something that currently is not required, and the state cannot come in and require the current owner to introduce that access. But what, when we speak with Ben, when we speak with DEB, you know, they'll be thrilled about that.
Right. So the, of all the structures that you're creating, you know, the second, third floors you had mentioned, is, and these structures can be higher than what's there now?
Uh, we don't think so.
I'm just wondering about the height issue.
Yeah, well, the zoning, we're gonna, we're gonna comply to this thirty-five-foot zoning, regardless, so. And, and even with the FEMA issue is a challenge, because.
I was gonna say that.
You got thirty-five here, and if you start jacking it up five to eight feet, I'm just getting, you know, we're getting squeezed, so. But we think at that fifteen feet, that leaves us twenty-eight feet in two floors, which is fourteen-foot floor to floor, which is, which works great, actually.
Okay. The other third thing I had was, on the Atlantica area there, you're dividing it into a variety of different uses, I can see that. The actual total amount of commercial space that you're gonna be having there actually is gonna increase, is that correct?
Yeah, well.
It sounded like it was almost gonna double.
Yeah, it almost doubles.
Yeah, right.
And I think that's a couple reasons. The, the current Atlantica building is, again, super inefficient. I mean, it's, it's almost, we've, we're about to go get this exactly measured, but it's close to thirty-five feet if you look at it. There's a second floor that peaks up, they have a whole bunch of offices up there, for catering offices, and there's bride and groom, changing rooms on the second floor. It's just inefficient. So if you imagine, I think what we're envisioning, and we're, we're really just trying to stay in the master plan phase now and focus on this use issue, from a zoning standpoint. But the way the building now, it just sits like one huge mass. So in the expense of tearing that down, complying with FEMA, creating new structures, you know, we wanna, we wanna capture what zoning allows us.
Right. Are they be separate buildings, or you have one?
Well, I think essentially, if you imagine, I think what we're envisioning is the ground floor, or a series of almost sort of separated program boxes.
But it'd be one contiguous structure, though, right?
Yeah, it'd be one building. And you're sort of feeding through it with harbor walk, you literally would be going through like kind of passageways.
With second-floor crossovers.
Right.
Yeah.
And the, and that goes back to the, the issue, which is, when Susan first drew this drawing, drew the line right through the Atlantica site, I was like, what are you doing? Cut the building, you know, and then I started seeing, if you look at the, you look at the remainders, you look at the remainders, you have, you know, this looks like a building, that looks like a building, and you could put a building in here. You start to have different scale buildings, and that's what we were struggling with, with Atlantica. Because you really wanna subdivide Atlantica, it's just one huge thing. And for us to lease to a qualified restaurant operator, you know, we want like a thirty-eight-hundred, four-thousand-square-foot restaurant. We don't want a sixteen-and-a-half-thousand-square-foot restaurant, no one wants that. So we want smaller volumes. So, you know, if you go back to this, you know, you start to see how it, it achieves that vision that the original harbor, so we're kind of thinking like, this is about making Cohasset Harbor about Cohasset. So these buildings start to be in a scale that feels better, but they also are then easier for us to lease and manage.
Right.
That's basically.
Plus you get customers and clients possibly walking right through, so that would be objectionable to the business, I'm sure.
Fish right through, and.
Works both ways.
And then, and then, just to clarify Susan's comment about the second floor, the function business is very important to Cohasset, it's one of the best wedding venues in the region, and, you know, we, we recognize that. But function halls are awful lot. When they're not in use, they're off.
Right.
So we want that on the second level, along with some hotel rooms, ten to fifteen rooms, that's sustainable in the marketplace, that services the function. But when those aren't on in function, they're not darkening the ground floor levels.
Right.
That's basically the concept.
It's Steve, I said Steve next, Jack?
Fine. Can I borrow you, Mr. Merritt, to put up the original?
The large scale?
Yes. Thank you. I'm sorry.
No problem.
It's flopping back and forth.
The easel's coming out a little bit, Susan, here.
I have a question, what year is this mound?
Nineteen oh three.
Nineteen oh three.
Like that?
That's great.
Okay.
So i- if you don't mind, just while you're, while you're up. No, 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 no.
No, but I wanna tighten this up.
Oh, all right.
Detail guy like that. Okay.
The, there's a parcel along Margin Street that you outlined, which would be part of it.
Yeah.
It's part of your negotiation. Is there a plan for that?
We have not decided what to do with that. It's single-family zone, it doesn't require any special overlay district or anything in particular. Cavanaro's looked at it, but we haven't, we've really focused on these other pieces.
No, no, I'm, I'm asking specifically for that reason, it was, it was noticeably left out, and so that's, that was.
We haven't decided what to, what to do with that. I mean, I, in our first Planning Board meeting, there was a number of people from Elm Court who were great. They came in, they were sort of anxious, like, what's this all about? They felt relieved and very excited when they left. And I think that, you know, there's perspectives of what should happen there or not. I mean, again, ultimately, it's, it's a single-family residential zone, we think that's a possibility.
Okay. Then there was a, a second question, now moving down a bit to the Atlantica, Old Salt House portion, as you well know, can see, the, the pier at, or the wharf at Old Salt House has had some issues.
Yep.
In your, in your vision for its final development, what form does that, does that pier take?
The patio at Salt House?
Well, right, it's an original wharf, or semi-original wharf.
Well, the, and also, Susan, I sort of messed up this foot on this easel, but we envision probably leaving Salt House where it is. It's possible that during the construction, we lift it up and move it around or something, but we kind of like that orientation, it's familiar to people, Salt House, the patio, I kind of wanna leave that setting. But in our agreement with the seller, we have a mechanism for that patio, because I, I mean, I recognize the whole thing, the patio's falling in, and there's issues around who owns the seawall, and, you know, I'm hearing all of this, or, you know, I'm getting all the stories, it's, it's completely perked up. Okay. I'm sorry.
Don't worry, guys. Assuming.
But, but we, we would do is, in our agreement, they're either repairing it before we close, or we escrow monies associated with that, and we, and we do the work, we will probably do that. And that will become part of the entire redevelopment.
I, I ask only from an aesthetics viewpoint, and I'm not an engineer, God knows, I'm not even close. As you look around the harbor, you see an awful lot of rock.
Right.
Right? It was a basic building material, because it was plentiful, I suppose, and it probably didn't weather all that. That pier originally was essentially granite block. The, the repair proposals are primarily pilings.
Right.
And so a natural question comes up is, would you reexamine that? I mean, if we're actually looking at, you know, the historical, the historical presentation or visual aesthetic of the harbor as, as a guide, is that something that you would take a look at as you proceeded toward closing?
Yeah, yes, we would. I, I mean, though some of those historical plans and images also show projections of piers, too, which is really kind of intriguing, you know, beyond the seawall, where there's elements of, you know, north wharf, south wharf, and these things stick out. That particular patio, as I understand it, there used to be a gas tank in there, there used to be gas service at the location, and it's problematic that it was backfilled with sand, and that has created issues with those seawalls buckling and pushing out and falling in, and one that fell into the left. I'm not sure what the material would be exactly, or what's the best way to go. I also think the bedrock's down there, so it's, it's difficult to drag piles in, but the current proposal that the seller has is essentially to take that patio and collapse it into sort of almost like a pyramid of rocks, and then build a wood patio, a wood pier over that. We're, we're okay with that. I mean, I, I think is it, it has to tie into the whole project. So it has to tie into the building edge, the harbor walk, the pathways and everything, so we, we haven't really figured that out yet.
Okay, and I recognize that this is a lot of concepted for you at this point, as opposed to execution, but I asked exactly for that reason, it's more of a direction question, where do you think you'd be going with it? You actually answered a number of the questions I had in your conversation with others, so I won't belabor that point. Specifics included numbers of residential units you envisioned, potential number of hotel rooms, restaurant seating structures and so on. Although you don't hit that, you're talking about the, the basic square footage, which makes it, which essentially answers the question. And the last piece that I have is just a personal comment to the audience, and that is that I was very skeptical when the village overlay district was, was put together, because I frankly didn't thoroughly understand what it would mean to the town. And now, looking back on it, some, ten years?
Twelve, yeah.
Twelve years later. I, what I, what we've seen is, although structures in the village are a bit tired by comparison to some of our neighboring communities, the vitality is, is unmistakable. And the, the change, the one variable that's changed is promotion of residential, residential exposure within that village district. And I never thought I'd see the day where houses on, you know, colloquially known as the hill, Pleasant Street, excuse me, Pond Street and the like, began to exhibit valuations that were once reserved for those water viewers, because they're walkable to the village. And that's a big deal. The village, however, essentially ends at, you know, where Elm Street meets Rook. And that's where the village stops.
Fleming's.
You know, it's, it's a bit like watching the movie Pleasantville, what's beyond it? And so it's actually, it's intriguing to hear, Susan, your description of what amounts to a causeway, a pedestrian causeway in particular, that connects the village and the harbor once again. Now, not that they were ever disconnected, but effectively, they have been, because unless you lived at the harbor, you had a function to go to at the harbor, you were lost and just found the Legion. Or, you know, or you wanted to go, you know, across to Basing's Beach. You didn't go to the harbor for anything but that specific purpose. To have that harbor be a casual visit for the residents would be, you know, it would actually, I think it would answer an awful lot of the responses that we got in the original questionnaires from the master plan. And that is that the, you know, when asked, what is the most important element to residents of this town, and the number one response was the harbor.
Yeah.
So that's, that's, that's all I have to say at the moment, thank you.
Jack?
So I'd like to request, Tim, give a very brief description of how the Harbor Master Plan is gonna integrate with this proposed project. And I'd also like to ask Clark to spend just a minute or two and talk about why we're being asked for an overlay, and what it means in terms of development, and what potentially the next steps. Chris might wanna speak about the next steps. But I think it's important that all three speak just briefly on what, what we're doing to give context to what this whole discussion's about.
Can I just, before we do that, and again, I don't, that wasn't something we anticipated to prepare, so to Jack's, it would be great to just have a brief link, but I do wanna open it up to the public, because I know there was some hands up. If you have a comment specifically on the, this particular discussion of the concept, and, and obviously.
Another, yeah, another couple of questions.
Oh, okay, so yeah, let's look, the selectmen finish, and then Franny, I'll get to you.
So in, in the grand scheme, you could potentially walk from the portion of the town landing with a public walkway. The current Cohasset Harbor Inn would be split, and there would be the first floor of a access for public restaurant, maybe it's a, access for, for public access in and out. You would follow along there, then you'd have the walkway along the water, and would, same thing would occur as you go through where, what currently is Atlantica.
Yes.
That's gonna have to raise up eighteen feet on one side, twelve on the other, so you'd have open space there.
Right.
Now, could there be transient vendors, vendors in there? Could you have like?
Could you have like, something like a seasonal vendors in there?
Sure.
Yeah.
The rest of that walkway would potentially go down to Government Island.
Right. That's the idea. And again, the, you know, it's pretty obvious, there's some private pieces, and this is the whole idea of whether it's grants or coordination. But there becomes this decision, okay, that's where it is. This is the specified finishes. My scope, here's town scope. We, you know, it, it, it comes together. The residential building, what we're showing is, conceptually, and we would, we would commit this when we want to do it, but the idea is that that top split with the main view is, is a fully open, permanently open, you know, walkthrough. But the second and third floor would go above it.
Yeah.
Okay? So again, like the rose wharf, but it probably would be, you know, not, I'm not as sure what the shape would be. But then the, the other entrance, which is something that Chapter 91 seeks, is public access to the water. So, we're achieving that, of course, up top with a fully open year-round one. But the idea is that the lobby to the building, you would come into the lobby of the building, it would be glass. That would be another visual connection, so you could see straight through the building to the water. And that public access goes to the restaurant, which is a facility of public accommodation, and has public bathrooms, which is also what the state requires. And then you can walk directly out to the harbor walk and get public access to the water edge. So that's the concept.
You done?
Okay.
Okay. Fran?
Couple of, couple of comments. I think your project sounds pretty good, but I've lived here for a couple of years now. This piece of land right here, this piece on Margin Street, this was salt mush. And the people that lived in here at some point took it upon themselves to fill it. And this is a, is an outfall, is a Brook outfall right here. And then went all the way up to Stockford Street. Spike went under the street by Julia Gleason's house now. So that drained that whole area, Elm Court, Stockford Street, Charlie Humphrey's house, all that area. So this, I've heard that potentially they were going to put a parking lot in here. And I'm afraid you put a lot of weight on that.
Push it right down.
Fill in, you're going to have big problems.
It is, it's mashed. It was just filled in with dirt and covered over, put some grass on it. So this, the whole thing is mashed. You're, you're right about the elm trees that came all the way down Elm Street. They were all the way through town, all the way around the corner.
Beautiful photographs.
Oh, yeah. They're millions old. We also have a thing called the captain's walk.
Yeah, we have that.
So as long as you have a cock rate that into your apple walk.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that, but I, here, here, remember Ozzy, who's dead now, but he put that together.
We love this. When she, when she showed me the captain's walk, I said, well, that's kind of our plan.
There you go.
Yeah. And you come all the way around the walk, and there's all these little buildings and different things happening all over. Now, we're modernizing, we're not.
Right in here, this is town land.
It's a split, yeah.
Because the, with the wall came here, this came right to Elm Street.
Right, right.
And I think this piece of property here is owned by that. That's the only piece of property on this side of the border street that's privately owned. Other than that, I just bring those points to your, for your consideration. But I think it's something pretty much right.
All right, Fred, thank you.
Thanks, Fred, for your comments. Tim and Clark, do you mind stepping up and just giving a little summary?
Sure. You may recall that it was about, gosh, six or seven months ago that the harbor committee was constituted, and we were, we were charged with developing, first of all, objectives. We developed ten objectives, which would lead to a harbor study. And Harriman is our consultant, that were, are helping us do a harbor study, which will lead to a harbor plan. Several months into our efforts, having developed the ten objectives, by serendipity, Harbinger came along and said, we'd like to do some work here with Atlantica and the Cohasset Harbor Inn. And as it turns out, working together with, with Aiman, with Clark, and with members of the harbor committee and others in town, we have developed the vision, a lot of which you've heard tonight. But the harbor committee, of course, has responsibility that goes all the way out to, essentially to Whitehead. This little piece here and half of the harbor, at the moment, is owned by Situit, and we're addressing that issue, because we'd like to get governance, control over Situit. But the vision would be to start the harbor walk here, and actually bring it all the way over to Government Island. The Sailing Club is over here. It'd be wonderful to have kids be able to ride their bikes along the walk, all the way over to the, the Sailing Club. One of the big problems that we have to deal with, of course, Aiman mentioned, this is not under his control at the moment. And any harbor walk has got to take that piece into control, under control. There also, at one point in one plan, there was a bridge right across here for a pedestrian bridge. So that's something else to be considered. That would certainly bring access over here. You mentioned parking. There is possibility of parking down behind the Lightkeeper's House. Something we're going to look at and perhaps be able to develop some parking over there, because parking is critical, without any question. We've got to develop parking. But that said, Aiman has been very responsive to the, the thoughts, concerns. Franny, thank you for your thoughts, and Franny has been helpful to the harbor committee as well in making sure that, at the end of the day, we get this right.
Great, thanks, Tim.
Clark, from the planning board. So, so far, so good. This is a, a process that I think everybody in town can get excited about. We have to deal with the zoning component, though. Because right now, the table of uses for waterfront business doesn't allow residential. It's a, it's a firm no. And, you know, historically, that may have been because the harbor was so important. It was such a commercial, important commercial component to the, to the town. And in fact, that's the reason why we became a town, is because our harbor was so robust compared to Hingham. We got more, what is it, codfish and mackerel and all of it. The commerce that came through there was tremendous, and it helped make, make Cohasset Cohasset in seventeen seventy. With that said, the harbor has the same problem that the village had before, twelve years ago, when we changed the village zoning bylaw. You can't do anything, basically. Anything that you want to do there isn't allowed by zoning. The same thing happened in the village, where there was no development potential in the village. So, we, we went through a process where we wanted to create vitality by having mixed use. And this is exactly the concept that the developer, developer's team is talking about. A mixed-use concept that can work at the harbor. I think there's, you know, people are going to be like, afraid of change, they're going to be concerned. What kind of, what kind of approval process is there going to be? What we have in, what we're trying to put in place is to have a review process for changing zoning. We'll, we'll see what we need to do to, to allow these kinds of use changes with the same control systems that we had for the village. I think that's going to be important. It's probably going to be a special permit process, as opposed to just as of right. But we're working on getting a consultant to help us with that, with the village. We had some public meetings, we had, we, we looked at scenarios, we changed zoning, we had design guidelines. We may not have all of that stuff for the harbor, but, you know, I think that working in parallel with a parallel process, I think that we can be ready for fall town meeting, if we have a consultant that can weigh in. And so far, so good on, I think, on what the developers proposing. I don't quite get the destiny, I see the square footages. But some of the moves, the, the few corridor, the harbor walk, again, some of the details may need to kind of fix or evolve. But, you know, the village concept for breaking down the scale at the harbor, that's great. I mean, I think there's a lot to be excited about here. You know, making sure that we have a process in place that protects everybody's interests, especially the, the long-range interests of the town. The mixed-use concept is a good one. It'll help make the, I think, the harbor more robust.
Great, thank you. Okay. I'd, I'd actually like to move on, if that's okay. I think this is very exciting. I look forward to, I think, the most important thing, Chris, that we need to stay on top of, is making sure that, that not only the board and selectmen, but the harbor committee and the master plan committee and the planning board, we're all kind of talking to each other and understanding exactly what steps each is taking at what time, and, and what different trigger points are. If we're going to get any conversation to get us to any kind of action at, at special town meeting.
So your backups, if, if the special town meeting is, we're talking. And the warrant has been everybody's hand since the Monday after Thanksgiving. You have to really complete your review by the beginning of November. So it basically gives, and accelerated the rest of this month, September and October, to really kick all this through.
Right.
Get the planning board to say, well, yes, and the other one has to continue. They have to say yes, they recommend it to the selectmen, you say, you put a warrant, and there you go. So, I mean, in a very, that's a very condensed version.
Right.
But, but Chris, we need to have a warrant placeholder by the end of September.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Which is coming up quick.
Yep, absolutely. And, and that's, 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 that's my point. And I, and I think the more we are able to, you know, link the various study committees and planning committees that we've been going in, and, and their updates and where they are, the easier it's going to be for everybody to understand what we're going to be asking them potentially in December. And so.
Because, and Clark pointed out, this is really a, all that does is just open up an opportunity for what's, what's effectively alternative zone. That requires a very robust process that would take place in the future anyway.
Right.
Town meeting wouldn't say yes, the project, they'd say yes, to having a further discussion about the project. It'd make it possible.
Right, but the more details about that process, the better. And, and people don't necessarily operate well with concepts. So, to the extent that we're able to help facilitate more and better conversations, I just want to make sure we're on top of it.
So, so I just want to say, I just want to make sure that everybody understands, we're going to special town meeting to ask for an overlay. It's a very targeted change to zoning, so that we don't run into trouble with, you know, a blanket change to zoning along the waterfront. It's very targeted, specific to those properties. And, you know, everybody's going to get a chance to weigh in with Harbinger's plan once the overlay goes in. There'll be a whole nother step where we look at the project. It goes through planning board, it goes through CONCOM, it goes, it has to go through the state. I mean, it's a, it's a really big process. Even, the Harbinger's looking at a, a year worth of planning after, after we get this overlay. So, everybody's going to have a chance to weigh in at least once, probably twice, maybe even three times. It's all going to be, you know, it's all going to be transparent, and everybody's going to get a shot at it. And just so everybody knows, behind the scene, there's a lot of work going on right now. And there's a lot of, a lot of great coordination among all the different committees. And Chris, you know, we're already working, we're going to, we're going to use the harbor contractor to help us with the overlay. So this, we're not starting from scratch, we're trying to leverage the people that are already involved. And, you know, I, I think it's going very, very smoothly at this point.
And the more we can, we can have the conversation here, the more informed the, the residents are in town. So, thank you all for being here.
We're actually, every day, it's time we're live, and there's so many things actively going, and they've come so far along.
Right.
This actually, if it's come at a different time, it might not have been as easy to, to work through.
Right.
And also, we'll, we'll facilitate as much as possible. In addition to committees and, you know, going to harbor committee on Thursday and planning board, we're happy to meet as much as possible with community groups or neighborhood groups. And, you know, people can reach us, and we can use Susan's office, so everyone can kind of really get their head wrapped around what, what the benefits are. I mean, it's really a massive set of benefits, really.
Right. And again, to Jack's point, we, we need to help facilitate the, the differential pieces here, which is, you know, right now, we're going to potentially look for an overlay for certain areas, what that means, and then your specific project and how that might roll out in the future. Right.
Oh, yeah.
In the future. Great. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Very impressive work.
Thank you.
Well, for all the right reasons, we are behind. Time pressing. So, so one of the things we need to, we need to do is get our goals and objectives and our budget message crafted.
Have a nice evening.
Good night. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Susan.
Good luck.
So, Chris, could we, could you kind of drill down a little bit on the, on our schedule? So we have a meeting on September fourth, which I think is going to be a regular business meeting.
Yes.
We have a lot.
So, the regular meetings, so, actually, let's roll up the conversation on the eighteenth into this for a second, because I think it's going to be important.
Yeah, that's fine.
The meeting on the fourth, which is a regular business meeting, I'm going to recommend that we do an executive affective follow-up of Seuss' commentary earlier tonight. And that's a night we're targeting for, and I have more conversations out with council. It's either the fourth or the eighteenth to have a Bob Brook executive session conversation. So, council's been working extensively to put some whole update package together. I also have, we've made some very positive progress on two, well, three contracts. So, hopefully, I, we might have as many as four contracts for the board to discuss in the executive session. Hopefully, I have a chance to ratify. So, we've had a very good week, anting conversations.
Excellent.
The eleventh is open. I know it's September eleventh, but the, the, that day is a Tuesday. I don't know what everyone's schedule is on, because that date is not, is clear for anything else. So, you have September eleventh as a possible date, if you need to do an extra meeting, do goals and objectives, or whatever, whatever else. The eighteenth does happen to be the first night of Rosh Hashanah, which is a high holy day in the Jewish calendar. And it does begin at sunset that night. So, the eighteenth may not be the, in hindsight, may not be the very best endeavor regardless of what you're moving. Unless you did that for a special, unless you, maybe the eleventh, the regular business meeting, maybe eighteen, the goals and objectives meeting, which is a little more off, off balance.
So, I, I mean, I think we have a lot to do. We, we have to do a budget message, we have to set goals and objectives for ourselves and you, which I think we can accomplish in, I think, all those three pieces we could do in one meeting, where, where, where there's no other business unless some emergency. So I would like to ask the board to consider having a meeting on the eleventh, and, and then discussing what to do the week of the eighteenth, whether Monday or Wednesday is an option. Yom Kippur, if I'm right, ends at sundown on the Wednesday.
Yom Kippur is the week before, and the eighth base letter is.
So, the first question is, is, is the board available on the ninth, on the eleventh?
What do, what days do we have meetings now in September?
The fourth and the eighteenth.
So, we're in the fourteenth and the eleventh?
So, so could we add an extra meeting on the eleventh, and maybe that becomes our goals, our goals, objectives, and budget message meeting? And then, so that's an X, that we're adding an extra meeting. Unless I hear from somebody, other than, other than generalized groaning.
Yeah. So, September would be the fourth, the eleventh, and the eighteenth, not the twenty-fifth, right?
Right, except we are going to talk about the eighteenth as a date that might potentially change.
What?
Because, because it's Rosh Hashanah, I mean, Yom Kippur, that's what Chris was just saying. So let's just focus on whether the board's available to meet on the eleventh to do a goals and objectives workshop.
I already have, okay, eleventh and the eighteenth.
Hold, hold the eighteenth. Steve, you think you're available?
On the eleventh, yes.
Okay, all right.
And the eighteenth, that was already scheduled to be available.
Okay.
And I, I'm, I'd rather not keep hopscotching around, because I'm trying to plan business travel here, too.
I know, I'm, I'm the same way. I'm going to be gone each week, but we, so we have a meeting on the ninth?
You can meet on the eighteenth, I mean, it's not.
Yes, I know.
Correct, okay. So, so, we're going to add a meeting on September eleventh. Okay? Now, the next week, we have a meeting scheduled for the eighteenth. So, the, the only consideration is, it is the first night of Yom Kippur. You know, it would prevent some of the public from participating in our meetings.
And council will not be available.
Council will not be available.
If you needed it for a hearing.
But we may not need him for a hearing.
I'm just, you have to just plan around those realities.
We do have a hearing potential.
It can't be that day.
For what?
A liquor license.
A sargent matter.
Sargent matter.
Has come back from the dead.
On the eighteenth?
No, it hasn't come, you haven't set a date yet.
It has to be sometime that month.
So why don't we make it on the eleventh?
So, right, so we, we could, we could do, whatever, let's, let's hold off on that. So we, let's do, let's plan the eleventh to be our goals and objectives workshop. And given some reluctance to change the eighteenth, we'll keep that meeting as is. So we have three meetings in September, the ni, the fourth, the eleventh, and the eighteenth.
Okay.
Okay?
What's October look like, just so I have, just, do you have any?
That's, um, sorry. It is the.
Ninth and thirteenth, I think that's right.
Correct. Died to twenty-third.
Ninth and the twenty-third.
And the twenty-third, yeah, okay, fine. And we don't meet on this week, because for some reason I have the. And we don't meet on this week, because for some reason I have the twenty-second.
Yeah, yeah, we, originally you did, but we moved that, because I'm gonna be out of town on the twenty-third.
Right. Okay. So, we're good. Ninth, the fourth, the eleventh and the eighteenth. Okay. Alright.
If it's not Rosh Hashanah, check.
Check.
Yes.
That's a big.
I think I said Rosh Hashanah. Town manager update, let's go right to that.
Okay, so town hall update. The building walkthrough, the consultant's been retained to do the systems analysis, will happen next week. The consultants currently are viewing all the existing documentation on the building and prep for that walkthrough and working with the staff, so.
Who's in the one, we'll get that.
It's, it's a, I, I, and I don't remember the name of the company off the top of my head. It's a consulting company that does building analysis. They do, in fact, when I first looked at that contract, it was so intense because they do a lot of private stuff for companies, doing due diligence on purchasing a building. So what they're gonna do is the, basically the same thing here, they're gonna walk around and double, you know, they. One of the concerns was there wasn't enough of a treetop level look at the systems of this building and what the repair costs might be. So they look at the windows and the roof and the HVAC and, and all of those things and say, hey, this is a useful life end or not. To give some data on what to repair.
So you're having that done next week?
Yes.
Now, will we get a report on that that we'll see, right?
Correct, there'll be a comp, and I'll roll in the, the air quality and the water and the electrical system, that'll all be put in a package.
And we'll have the, the executive summary.
Which you have.
Which we have from Wendell Cassel, the architect. And, and then, layering on top of that, we're gonna have some of the financials. So at some point, we will have a conversation about a separate meeting where we kinda, you know, open up to the public, bring the relevant committees in and discuss kind of the raw data we have and what some next steps might be, which then we can discuss at a selectman's meeting.
So, can I make two points?
Yep.
One is, we asked for data on scope of work if we were just to renovate both buildings as is.
And that's what this.
Okay. Second thing is, is I'm not clear on what our next steps are in terms of the town hall construction committee. You know, my guess is we're gonna wanna reconstitute it and rethink what its charter is. And then I don't know what the long-term plan is. You know, I don't know what the selectmen are planning for this whole project going forward. So, I think we, it'd be great, I'd like to see us put it on the, one of the agendas over the next couple of weeks, so we can talk it through.
So, yes, I mean, obviously, there is, there are no plans. I mean, the plans were to get all this data together and then figure out how to tee up some of the next steps. Which would include the committee, which would include, you know, are we going at annual town meeting to do something? Whether it's repair, whether it's similar, whatever. So, I don't think we're there yet, but absolutely, that's sort of what I was, that is what I was trying to say, if I could make it clear.
Yep.
So, we need to get this raw data that we asked Chris for in, in June. Once we have it all, we will sit down and kinda look it over and then start, the selectmen will decide on some next steps in terms of recharging committees, et cetera, et cetera.
I, I, I wanna get you data as thoroughly as possible to, so we're not on a, we're not on a artificial deadline timeline. Probably early October might be the best, I think that'll give time to digest it more and the soft circulate stuff and say, we really need more stop report. So, that's what I'm kinda shooting for.
Right.
That's, Donald, that'd have more time in September to do some of the deep that we like to do until then. We're gonna redo the cap, the tenure capital plan in September.
Right.
Dashboard, you know, debt, all that.
Right. And, and especially if there's some, like immediate something we need to do in terms of a renovate, you know, in terms of fixing something or something. It's gotta be part of the capital plan.
There's nothing that's come out that says fix it now or we're dead, right? So, nothing like that.
Would be nice to get that first.
I, I would, I would let you know, I would not have a lot of surprise. So, the air quality analysis did not come back that there's toxic elements in the area.
Right.
There's some old, there are some old issues, but it's remediable, right? The water's the same thing, I mean, there's, there's stuff in the water, but, you know, it's mostly stuff that's in the water anyway. This building has a little bit, you know, some of the pipes are a little old, but it's not like it's killing anybody, so. That, the test showed.
That's the good news, right?
Exactly, so it's. And this is, this spruce up stuff, we're trying to do independently, by the way, low budget spruce up stuff. I did a walkthrough with Nick, our assistant facilities director, we walked around the building. This, this cracks, this, you know, break in the, we went up, see, there's stuff we have to fix to make sure that people can functionally use it. We're gonna patch the, the head cap accessible ramp, for example. It probably shouldn't be entirely replaced, but it doesn't make sense to do that right now. Patching will at least get us through another six months. And that's a low budget fix that needs to get done, so that's the kinda stuff we're gonna get done. If there's a painting that has to get done and they can fit in a budget as well, if it's not, I'll come back and say, we need some money, do something like this. With the expectation we're gonna have to, this is gonna stay as it is at least for the foreseeable future. On a win, I mean, obviously, once you have more of a conversation, you'll pick that up. So, we are working towards it. Jacobs, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, budget, just budget calendar?
Yeah, so, I'm working with Don, so this is, it's on like a half a calendar right now, you're welcome to take a look at it. So, I'm gonna sit down and begin with Don when he comes back tomorrow. So, the capital budget process starts, I've actually had a meeting with Sam, the chairman, Monday, and we met internally. That's only like a half calendar at this point, so. We usually release it right around, you know, mid to late August. So, we have the tentative special town meeting day on December tenth, I'm working on that, that's one date. And April twenty-ninth for the annual town meeting is another date, which rolls up a whole bunch of other things. I mentioned Carol on deadlines for petitions and articles and all of that. Basically, and we've also had some nice robust conversations with, with, with Sam and John from Capital Advisory about tweaks and improvements to the whole process. I think there was a consensus that some of those joint meetings were very effective. It would also be helpful to have some meetings in the fall, where maybe have a bunch of people in a room talking, you know, publicly setting about some key goals and objectives, you know, capital maintenance. I know the, the, the. So I'm gonna, I will have a more robust version of this circulated well before your next meeting, so you can chew on it.
This is enough where it's missing, special town meeting?
Yeah, I know, this, this, yeah, this, this, there's not.
Okay.
At the next meeting, you really should formally adopt, I've cleared the dates with the schools, so we're good on the September tenth. We've got on January twenty-ninth and the days after, because we had to do it for two nights for some terrible reason. That's smart food if you needed some extra food.
He's back.
He's back.
So, we're coming along. So, the, the capital budget process internally is already, is starting this week, so.
And advisory too, they're starting to meet and.
Yes, they're starting, they're meeting next Monday.
Next week, yeah.
So, they're, they're planning on doing some analysis to further give this board data and their opinions on the budget message. So, that's what they did last year, they were moving. So, that's in progress. So, Jacobs Meadow, so that's the structure, I, I could have pointed it out on the, on the map that you was looking at. Now, regulated title flow in Jacobs Meadow, across religion next to the class that I'm running. Something had, had been identified by Brian, an emergency relief valve has now been installed on it. So, if now, if, if the gate is ever locked down for whatever reason, water will be able to flow when it's able to. So, you have to have a lower water level on the outside than the inside. So, there's an emergency relief valve, so even if the, the, we had a power failure and the gate got locked down, water can still flow out. Not quite the same rate, but before it couldn't do that at all, so that's a very positive development. The, the main slip valve, the, I should say, the gate, the slide gate, has to be replaced, the actual gate piece. It's been, it's now on order and, and will be installed hopefully sometime this fall, which will improve the operations. The gate has worn. It didn't come unfortunately with an owner's manual and a, and a, and a replacement guide. We have, we're building one now, as time goes on, so. So that, that's actually, and that's on order. And the crews have been over there doing the best they can to keep it fully functional. It's starting to stick sometimes, and it's random, so. The, there's going to be a public meeting as well in September, working up to have a community meeting. Both to formally update everybody as to what's going on and also to educate the homeowners who may be comparatively new, that they do live on a salt marsh. It's a, it's a meadow, but it's a salt marsh meadow. So, there are folks who don't, I don't think fully appreciate that the tides can go up and down back there. The gate keeps it from getting bad, there are kinda be times, and unfortunately it happened once, this back, back in March during one of those terrible storms. We lost power at the worst possible time, while the crews were in the middle of, you know, dealing with things all around town. So, by the time that it got, got sealed, a lot of water had come in and water was falling from the sky. So, that was a hundred-year storm plus. So, the, the goal of the tide gate is obviously to minimize that as much as possible. With its, the fixes that are already in place and are coming, which should hopefully. So, there will be a public meeting on that, hopefully set up for some time, we'll let all of you know if you want to attend as well, so. And, I think that's, those are my few, if there's any questions on that, I mean.
We'll go to selectman comments and then if they have a question, Steve, Mr. Self?
I, I actually don't have anything at the moment, so thank you.
Jack?
Geez, that's so.
I, I got, you guys want to close, yeah, I'm gonna pause for a second.
Let's just all enjoy that moment.
Okay.
Jack, you're up.
So, I got more phone calls about the Troyka appointments to capital budget than I have anything since I've been involved in town politics. I don't know the full story, I, you know, tonight's probably not the place to do it, but I'd really like to find out what happened. And maybe have a discussion around what the Troyka's for and how it works. I don't think we have any policies and procedures around how a Troyka works, but I can tell you, I got over twenty-five phone calls over this. And, and apparently there was a cartoon in the Mariner that memorialized the transaction.
Yeah, putting square pegs in a round hole, yeah.
So, I, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to have the selectman talk about the Troyka. You know, it is an artifact from the old days when we didn't have a town manager act. There was a lot of robust discussion among the governance committee, which I was on and a bunch of other people around here around. About why we have it and what's the point.
Right.
And, you know, to some extent, you know, we may wanna talk about what long-term we wanna do with the Troyka.
So, I, I would certainly, I, I, I'm actually shocked to hear that, I, because I, I know of one, it was a very, I think, productive, not very controversial meeting. There, there was some discussion with one appointment, but other than that, I think it went very well. Dan is the chair of the Troyka, so I think probably the best thing to do would be to invite him to come in and have a discussion.
I, I heard there's gonna be a reconsideration of the votes that were taken at the Troyka?
That's totally news to me.
Oh, okay.
So, I don't know anything about that.
So, I, just to emphasize, I, I have had, I didn't have twenty-five, but I had three or forty, four, four phone calls and four people stopping on the street, asking questions about it. And while the process itself might, not the process, but this particular process might generate its own questions and those are, those are worth examining. I think the bigger one that is important for the town to consider, not the board, the board is a part of it. Is, is exactly where Jack is going. What, what was the basis, what is any of our understanding about why a three-person uber committee can break all protocols for which we are elected? And one of them, which seems absolutely bizarre to me, is that the chairman, that the chairman of the advisory committee actually has.
Points their own committee.
Points their own committee.
Right, right.
Points their own committee.
Right, it's ridiculous.
And, you know, and that's, that's a, just a total head scratcher.
Yeah.
And finally, I've never seen an element where this board has ever reached down within the committee, within a committee to reshuffle the pieces. And that's, you know, the number one committee has to do it.
That didn't happen though, right.
Well, actually, it, it did.
It did.
How did it happen?
The, in this.
You appointed a new person, sorry.
No, you go ahead, you go ahead. It was, this was your topic, so I'm not.
Yeah, I mean, so Steve and I are the people, Steve and I were both chairman of the capital budget committee, Steve much longer than I was. We both worked on putting an associate into the capital budget committee because we needed bench depth. It takes people more than two years to get to the point where they can actually function within capital budget, because there's a lot to learn. So, I, most of the complaints I got were, why was a person who's brand new to capital budget put into a full-time slot? And somebody who'd been on capital budget for a couple of years left in the associate spot? That was the issue.
To me, that's, that's actually a surprise and a non-issue because we didn't even discuss that. So that's, let's, you know, I don't wanna go there, but that was not even.
No, no, no.
That's, that's, you're right.
It wasn't discussed with the Troyka.
It's not a, it's not a point for tonight either.
Right, right.
But that was the effective outcome.
Yes, true.
And there may be a huge misunderstanding there.
We, we sat here a week before and actively asked a, a committee chairman of a regulatory committee about his recommendations for how you take on full-time members and associates and so on. And he was clear-headed and, and made his recommendations.
Yeah.
And we paid attention to them, recognizing that that chairman understands how his committee might work best.
Right.
That's a, that seems to be a protocol that we've always followed.
The only difference is in that, to be, to be fair, and we did not discuss this. I did learn later that, that there was a leapfrog, but I, we weren't aware of it on, when we were doing the appointments. But what I will say is that for the regulatory boards, those are non-voting positions.
It's, the associates is a non-voting position in capital budget.
That, oh, that was not my understanding, so.
They, they can vote if there's.
That's something we should, we should discuss at another time, but that, it literally was not an issue at the meeting. We had ones, one opening, you know, two openings, two applications basically, and that's what happened. So, it was, it did not come up, we did not say, wait a minute, there's an associate or a non-associate position, it was a, so. So, I, yeah. And I was not aware of any new meeting or reconsideration, I think, so.
And, and I'm a little bit.
When I know a little more about that, I'll be happy to address it.
And I'm a little bit concerned about evaluation of people on committees making papers, you know, I mean, I think.
I know, I agree.
We work really hard to not do that, you know, because all of us have been subject to that. I mean, personally, you know, my wife was criticized publicly. I mean, it's not a good way to get volunteers to work, and I'm totally against public discussion of personalities. So, you know, I think that's another issue that I'd like to talk about.
We went, we went there only a little bit. And I think it was frankly mischaracterized a little bit in the, in the press, but, anyway, so, I, I hear you.
So, will you just put that on the agenda for discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to talk to Dan, because I wanna hear about some of the fallout that hasn't come across my email box, so. And find out what's, what's, what's really happening, so. So, I feel kind of like, wait a minute, I didn't know that. I mean, I know about what was in the Mariner.
I'm actually delighted that the section of, the walkway from Sawyer from the school all the way up to Fair Oaks has been cleaned out.
That was quick.
Yeah, which is probably the jockers there, and it's kinda, the benders on the road there. So, before school, it's been tidied up, so that should be safe for the kids to get to school. That's it.
How long was that?
I was asked just to remind people, again, we had, we approved it earlier, but that there is a community vigil on Friday, August thirtieth for the International Overdose Awareness Day sponsored by Safe Harbor Cohasset Coalition. So, from six-thirty to about eight o'clock on the common, they will be holding a candlelight vigil and have some speakers. So, I encourage the community to show up. And that's it, we don't have minutes to approve this week, I have no topics not reasonably anticipated, and I will call for a. Oh, I'm sorry.
We are anticipated, unanticipated. We'll be quick, be honest.
Okay.
I didn't bring fresh fruit.
No, I, I'm sorry, I wish I knew you were coming, but, go ahead, come on up, please be brief, because it's not on the agenda, so we can't really comment.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Paul Kearns, thirty-nine Oak Road, Vice Chairman of the Affordable Housing Steering Committee, also Chairman of the Cohasset Elder Affairs. We've been aggressively pursuing our charter of affordable housing, meeting with a lot of the nonprofits and state agencies to, to figure out what we can do here in the town of Cohasset for affordable housing. The one thing that everyone has asked us, the first question they all ask us is, do you have a trust set up? So, we're just asking you to put something on the agenda to get the trust set up. And working with the town manager, we understand that a trust was set up years ago, but we're not sure how dormant it is. Trustees have to be appointed, and we also need to get funding into the trust, so that we could be able to move about and utilize some funding in that area.
This has all been set up?
Tom Callahan did it.
Well, so the, the mechanics that would need to be approved by town meeting to set up a trust has been done. My understanding is there's no money there and there's no committee there.
No trustees, so we need.
So that's something, yeah, we'll put it on the agenda.
Okay, so we need funding and we need trustees. And, and we, we wanna make sure that we get that.
Before, before you go too far, Paul, we need to check on that, because there, there were trustees and unless they have resigned, they still exist as trustees.
They don't have terms?
I don't believe there are terms in a trust.
They're legal trustees, it's a legal.
Oh.
It's an entity.
Okay, yeah, let's look in that. We'll look that up and I'll put it on soon agenda.
With that said, if you recall, we had three separate trusts, two at the school and one with Cohasset Elder Affairs, in which we thought we could.
in which we thought we could close those out, but then determined that they could not be closed out. So, in our tax bills, we got a little notice saying, if you want to keep donating, go right ahead. Again, we don't have trustees set up to disperse any funding for that as well. So, that's something that'll have to be addressed as well. But our priority would be for trustees for affordable housing first. There's only five thousand in the C E A trust, there's, there's ten or twelve thousand in the school trust collectively, so we need trustees to disperse.
People actually spend an extra money, huh?
So, yeah.
I figure.
Okay.
So, Chris, this is, I would imagine, a Paula.
Yeah, we talked about it.
Presentation, conversation.
It's trustee season, so we want to be able to go to a fall town meeting and be able to disperse funds if we need to into these accounts. So, we want to try and get them set up before, and of course, an article would have to be placed by the end of September. So, that's what our, our immediate need is.
Great.
So, can I just ask one quick question? You know, I know affordable housing's been working with the master plan. I think as a selectman, I'd really like to hear what the plan is going forward. You know, what's the five-year plan for affordable housing in the town? You know, create context for us, help us make decisions about affordable housing. So, I'd really like to hear a discussion around what are the goals for the next five years for affordable housing? And maybe what are the long-term goals, you know, according to your, all the work you guys have done? So, and, because I'm totally out of the picture on this.
And, and just, and not to, to stretch this out any further than we already have. Pete, our planner, has been working with the Mass Housing Partnership. They're looking to come into town to do a presentation, and we're, we're, I believe we're about if, either to get funding or about to get funding from the M A P C to do this housing production. So, we've asked, we've applied for money some months ago, I believe that that's either imminent, the two of them are imminent. So, they will be able to come on board to do, to work, to turn some of these thoughts into a, the plan, which is another, by the way, it's another way to protect from.
Yes, and, you know, for me, the concern is, you know, there's, there's, there's the public track, and then there's a private partnership track, and I'd like to know how we're going to work together on both these, because, I mean, you know better than anybody else what the limitation is taking, state funds for, for housing. I mean, it really restricts what you can do, and I know there've been folks talking about a private-public partnership where there are no state funds, so we have more flexibility, so. And veterans housing as well, we talked to folks about. Right, and, and, you know, and moderate income housing for town employees and, like the Lincoln model, we've talked about the Lincoln model. So, I, you know, I'd just like to have the selectmen talk about this.
So.
We'll dress this up and.
Yeah, let's, let's also talk, I mean, I hate to keep tagging, you know, different meetings, but this is a huge conversation and might, might be a better, like, joint meeting with, I don't, let's, let's think about it, but we had, when on C P C about five years ago, we had somebody from Mass Housing Partnership come in, and it was eye-opening in terms of, to your point, the limitations of any kind of public funding.
And we have a, a meeting on another night, everyone can come and then just take part in the conversation.
And, yeah, and, and have master plan people there and.
And then the selectmen can take.
Give some context.
If we do it within the context of the master plan, where you keep the, this, you know, discussion manageable.
You have to, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
So, what we can do is we can, if, if we can get these trustees assigned, or find out who they are anyway, and get some funding into them in the short term. And then we can put together a, a plan that fits your agenda, you know, over the next several months, to give you an idea of what we're working on. Right. Because we do have proposals coming in for one particular lot that we need to present to the selectmen anyway. So, we're putting that together, so we want to meet sometime in September on, on that one plan, with that one piece of property. But we can also give you the overview of, of all of the programs that are available. Thank you, great, Paul.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul.
Okay, um, if there's anything else, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
Just move.
For a second?
Second.